Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Councillors, I have had time to reflect on last week's meeting in relation to the ability to request items to be taken seriatum for voting within committee reports, following the conclusion of the three hours allowed for debate on those committee reports. Going forward, I will allow report clauses to be taken seriatum if any councillor so requests. I will take the requests from councillors as each report is put to the vote. Are there any apologies? Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I wish to advise that councillor Stephen Hawang will be absent today and I move that he be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney that councillor Hawang be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw your attention to the motion of appreciation at item two on the agenda. Lord Mayor, would you please move the motion?
Thank you, madam chair. I move that, as this is the last meeting of council for this year, Brisbane City Councillors thank all council staff for their hard work and dedication in making Brisbane an even better place to live, work and relax in 2024.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by councillor Cassidy that, as this is the last council meeting of the year, Brisbane City Councillors thank all council staff for their hard work and dedication in making Brisbane an even better place to live, work and relax in 2024. Is there any debate? Lord Mayor.
Yes, madam chair. Well, City Hall is buzzing with the sound of the seniors' Christmas parties downstairs and it's always a joyful time. I see councillor, the councillor for win and win and win and win and winham has decorated the chamber. I see a number of you are wearing festive clothing, but it is the time of year when we are genuinely grateful, even more so than normal, to the council team, the larger council team, the larger council family that do such a great job over the year for Brisbane City Council and most importantly, for the people of Brisbane. It seems like this year has gone faster than others. It could have something to do with the fact that there was an election at the beginning of the year. We tend to sort of, that puts everything on fast forward in some ways, but an incredible amount has happened this year and particularly during that early period of the year where we were in a caretaker period, I genuinely appreciated the way that the leadership of council and everyone in this organisation kept the city running, kept the city ticking along, continued to do the things that needed to be done, even while the democratic process was underway, delivering amazing results as they always do. We genuinely appreciate as well at this time of year, the council officers, particularly those doing a frontline essential services that will be working when other people are taking a break and we know that there are many people in that category, whether it's continuing to fill the potholes and resurface the roads, where it's continuing to be in the BMTMC Traffic Management and Transport Management Centre, making sure everything's flowing, whether it's the people that maintain our parks, that clean our streets and maintain the malls, there are so many jobs that continue on throughout this festive season and we're particularly grateful for those who give up their time during that period to make sure Brisbane keeps operating as so many people take a break. And so we also acknowledge that there's been a lot of work done when it comes to gearing up the relationship this year with the state government, when it comes to a new transport contract that was agreed to with the former government and a better deal for council and now the work that's been done in recent times in particular, which will help deliver the rollout of Brisbane Metro from the 28th of January next year. These are critical changes and improvements that have been made throughout the year and it wouldn't have been possible without the support right across the organisation of so many wonderful people. This time of year is also the time of year when we have the Lord Mayor's Awards for Excellence, which, as the name suggests, acknowledge innovation and excellence and great work that is done right across the council. And this year, I can confirm, the winners of the Awards for Excellence include the Courage to Make a Difference Award going to the Koala Partnership Research Team, which do a fantastic job, the Getting Things Done Award to the Walter Taylor Bridge Essential Maintenance Team, who did a fantastic job in delivering that project, the Passion for Brisbane Award goes to our Environment Centre's Bush Kindy Programme Team, which is also a wonderful project that engages with some of our youngest Brisbane residents and gets them passionate about our natural environment. The Respect for People Award goes to Brock Winters, different Brock in organisational services, and he's done a fantastic job in the culture of the organisation. Responsible Customer Service Award, Public Space Liaison Officers, and we know also that they are at the front line and they deal with incredibly challenging and complex circumstances and also they will continue to be working throughout the break as well and we appreciate them for what they have done and what they've continued to do. The Value for Money Award goes to the Resilient Clubs Support Programme Team and the Working Together Award went to the $2 Summer Dips Team, who got the award for last year but just gearing up as of the weekend for another big summer. And I want to thank everyone that's been involved in those teams, but every single person that works for or with Brisbane City Council. It is a wonderful organisation to be part of and I know that people do these jobs right across the organisation because they care about Brisbane, they want to make a difference, they are passionate about our city and they want to see it.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you very much, Chair. I rise to speak on this motion of appreciation to council staff and I am very thankful for the fantastic work that councils, employees, contractors and labour hire workers do each and every day in Brisbane. They support us as councillors, day in, day out, in this place, in our wards and serving the people of Brisbane. They really are the backbone of this organisation. That's why I get disappointed, I know my colleagues over here do, when we hear how they're treated by this LNP administration. Recently, we learnt that library employees are feeling uneasy because of cuts to programmes and staff. Brisbane City Council library staff numbers have been cut by around 30 positions in the last two years. Right across the board, we hear from staff who are being overworked because contracts are ending without those positions being filled and we can see the evidence of that in questions on notice just today. Further to that, the LNP recently gave their offer at the negotiating table for the latest enterprise bargaining agreement, blatantly targeting staff as a measure to save costs. A proposed 3% wage increase just months after the Lord Mayor and all of us as politicians received a 4% backdated pay rise in July as a slap in the face for dedicated council staff. And to rub salt in the wound, the LNP have also proposed to reduce redundancy entitlements from three weeks per year of service to two weeks when an employee is made redundant. For someone who'd worked for council for 20 years, that would mean $50,000 less in redundancy payments. And we know why the LNP regime plan on making staff cuts. The mid-year financial report before us later today says it in black and white, there's $56.5 million in employee cuts this financial year and almost $120 million in employee cuts over the next four years. Council workers will return next year questioning how much longer their position in council is safe for. We know the LNP cannot be trusted when it comes to cutting staff. Over the last few years, we've seen contract and temporary staff cut, casual staff cut and now we worry about permanent staff facing the chopping block next year. How about we get back to basics and look after the people who do that best, our workers? I want to let each and every worker in council know that the Brisbane Labour team on this side of the chamber hears you, we value you, we have your back. We will continue to fight for you. We thank you for all your efforts and dedication that you have shown over this last year, whether it's library staff, bus drivers, road crews, mosquito spraying, all those frontline employees with boots on the ground, all those working in compliance, finance, transport planning or asset services, we thank you very, very much for your work. There's also the staff who help us here in City Hall, of course, Helmer, Alina, Melissa, Raymond and Billy. You make every day we are in this place feel so welcoming and we appreciate the work that you do to support us. You are here early in the morning to late in the evening and you always have a smile on your face, so we say thank you. To the IT team, who are listening along now, also deserve a special mention, Aaron, Billy, Brody, Hope and Craig, and the team of streaming guys as well, you two are here early in the morning and late into the evening and you keep these meetings running smoothly and our staff connected. To the committee clerks and the clerks who are here in the chamber, thank you for your work in making sure that we meet all our obligations under the City of Brisbane Act in terms of how we vote on things and how things are recorded and that is a very important, a very important thing. To Damon and to the councillor support team, your support is invaluable. To us as local councillors and the work that we do in representing our communities to the best of our abilities, I know it's busy and sometimes very stressful and we ask a lot, but your support is really invaluable to us. To the council officers who assist me locally in my duties as the councillor for Deegan Ward, thank you very much. We've kept you very busy this year in parks and footpaths and roads and in drains and I say a very big thank you on behalf of me and my staff in my ward office for your support this year. And last but not least, of course, I'd like to thank my staff that worked directly for me this year, it was an election year, as the Lord Mayor said, then they went above and beyond during that period and the period since. Obviously, wasn't the result on this side of the chamber that we had hoped for, but I'm proud of the efforts and the results I received in the Deegan Ward, of course. Wouldn't be able to do this job in any way, shape or form without the enormous support I get from my team there, Jen, Emily and Ronan in the ward office and Quinn, who left early this year after four years of very hard work to go on to do different things. So thank you very, very much for everything you do. I know every councillor here understands and appreciates the work those staff do every day of the week, it's not just a nine to five job, they really do put their shoulder to the wheel. Our labour team here in City Hall is also supported by a small yet hardworking and loyal team, Aaron, Paul and Jess, who are listening along. Thank you very much for all you do to keep our team here in City Hall on track, the support you give us. To all those staff, those I've mentioned, those who have not been able to, no matter how you're spending this festive season, I wish you a peaceful and relaxing time with things that make you most happy in life.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Further speakers, councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, madam chair. I also rise to speak on this motion of appreciation. Councillor Cassidy, through you, Mr Chair, has mentioned many, many people, which potentially we'll all mention as well, but it, and it's always a problem, you don't want to leave anyone out, so you need to know that you are all appreciated and I do want to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you for your continued hard work and dedication to all of us here in City Hall as a team. My staff and I have enjoyed working alongside you all and look forward to working with you in the new year. Obviously, a particular mention to a few people, Grant Murray, who is our outcome manager and I know he's an outcome manager for a few others in the chamber and he is exceptional. For someone who's come from outside of council, he certainly does a fantastic job. Then there's Martin McNamara, Tim McCoy, Damon Hughes, Jim Lynch, Mark Burton and then we've got the IT, James, Billy, Craig, Aaron, and then we've got Hope Well and Brody, also in the IT team as well, who keep us online, so to speak, and they're available at the drop of a hat. For me, particularly my office staff, Heidi, Fiona and Michelle, Heidi's been with me from day one, in fact before day one, and she's now down to two days a week, but she still works just as hard as she always has and of course Fiona has been a fabulous addition as is Michelle to the team. Everybody here and working in the City Hall, the chamber staff, they have been here, some of them have been here for a long, long time, right from the beginning, some have even worked in my own office, which has been fabulous, the Lord Mayor's office team, everybody that works in that space, the ladies who do our afternoon tea for us and look after us, Billy, who always makes sure that we're all well fed and watered. The other people I wanted to mention, and I know councillor Hutton won't mind me saying this, City Standards and Compliance, that's a team very close to my heart, they work extremely hard, they are the doers. If you need, if anything's got to be done, it's councillor Hutton's team and I really want to take this opportunity to thank them all particularly because I know how, just how hard they work and I hope they all have a nice break over Christmas, as you all do, and let's pray for some just gentle weather in January because none of us want to go back through what we did last time, so fingers crossed it's just gentle, sunshiny rain and we're all good to go. So I hope you all have a great break anyway and we come, all come back refreshed in February. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marks. Further speakers, councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on this motion of appreciation to Brisbane City Council staff. In what has been an incredibly difficult year for many residents, I give my heartfelt thank you to Brisbane City Council workers, workers who have had to do more with less resources and colleagues. I see you, I recognise potential frustrations, feelings of uncertainty and disappointment. Yet, even in light of these challenges, I recognise the great contributions and the hours served, even with these constraints, to deliver positive changes and deliveries for residents across Brisbane. I want to share a couple of specific thanks, starting with those that support us here in chambers and committees, to the clerks, to the IT support and of course, Melissa, Alina, Helmer, Billy and Raymond. I want to share my thanks to the staff in TPO. I appreciate the openness and openness to my advocacy to look at design from a less car-centric approach, prioritising pedestrian safety, act for transport routes and improvements. Thank you for your openness. I want to thank the Museum of Brisbane and Powerhouse staff who provide entertainment through arts in what is a great time and challenge for artists and artists across Australia, not just Brisbane. Thank you for everything you do. I want to thank transport planners, while we aren't always in agreement, I appreciate the delivery of information and I look forward to more transparency to ensure Gabba Ward residents, who are incredibly engaged and active, are delivered information and not kept in the dark. I want to thank our maintenance and green space crews. I want to thank our cleaners, including those that are contracted. I want to thank the customer service workers, who are always so friendly and helpful. We appreciate you so much. I want to thank library workers. Across the year, I understand there have been horrific cuts hitting libraries, our libraries hard. What library workers do is incredibly important. These spaces are community spaces, they're spaces for learning, they're spaces for respite, they're spaces for building community and reducing social isolation. Thank you for what you do. Special thanks, of course, to Carupa Library staff, Loretta and her team. I want to thank festival liaison team, I've seen great efforts particularly inside approvals across the ward, which have shown compassion and care for rough sleepers. I really appreciate the effort and look forward to working with you more in the future. In what was the worst housing crisis since the depression, I want to thank public space liaison officers, who are at the front line, sometimes in very challenging and complex situations. Thank you for your compassion. A special thanks to Ryan and Keir, I appreciate the time and work we've done in this space over this past year. I want to thank Damon and Sarah, I know I am one of many councillors that you all work with, but I want to pass on my thanks for your work and support. And I want to ensure that, because my colleagues in the Gabba Ward also want to pass their thanks, not just to Damon and Sarah, but to everyone that they work with across the Brisbane City Council team. Lastly, I would like to thank the Gabba Ward staff, Taylor, Trish, we had a couple of moves, but also our temporary staff, Maddie and Nicole and of course Aurora. It takes a team of dedicated people to do the work that we do, I appreciate everything that you do. Thank you so much for every contribution that you do to try to make residents' lives in the Gabba Ward better. Lastly, I just want to say wholeheartedly, Brisbane City Council is a service-focused council and that takes a lot of people to make that happen. To each and every one of you, I thank you and I wish unequivocally that you have some good rest and that you enjoy the holiday season and have a safe holiday with your family, your friends and any loved ones. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Parry.
Thank you, madam chair, and I also rise to speak in support of this motion. What a year it's been for our city and indeed for our council officers who work so hard to make it better. As a brand new councillor in this place, navigating what is a very large and complex organisation can be daunting, but throughout my 12 months here, I have felt enabled, empowered and supported to do my job really well and that's thanks to council officers. We have such a professional and dedicated workforce and every single ward is unique, but what we all have in common is that we are a city that has had to deal with the challenges of growth and there are more and more challenges popping up daily. And thanks to the expertise, work ethic and good humour of my outcome manager, Tom McHugh, in Marchant, we've been able to tackle these challenges head on. I think a lot of us know Tom and we know how professional he is, how calm he is and honestly, we wouldn't be able to do what we do without him. Some of those challenges, indeed, we've been able to turn into opportunities, so thank you, Tom, from all of us. A few other people I'd like to mention, our senior arborist, Tom Leonard and his team. We love our trees in Marchant, except when we don't, so we really appreciate, and every other ward too, I assume, we really appreciate dealing with the multitude of requests that we put through on a, on a regular basis. Alan Jarvis, our Waterways guru and our king of Kedron Brook, there is nothing that Alan doesn't know about this iconic asset and Alan, your advice and expertise has been invaluable, so thank you so much. Troy Reed, Matt Wardlaw and the team in leasing, we've worked really closely together this year, I've got a lot of local sports clubs and community groups and I'm really proud of what we've achieved for them. Thank you. To the team at Waste Services, who help us to no end when we have issues with bin collection requests or requests for bins, thank you very much. To Damon and his team, who, Damon's been mentioned a few times already, but thank you for making sure that the bills are paid, the office is looked after and to the IT team, thank you for solving our IT woes beyond just a simple restart. Thanks for putting up with us. Jim Lynch and his team in Grants, who coordinates the delivery of approvals for the Lord Mayor's Community Fund, you are always efficient and always helpful, thank you, Jim. Colleen Kelly and the Communities team, who do so much for our community. Colleen is known by everybody on a first name basis in this sector on the north side, she's passionate and she cares, thank you, Colleen. Megan Bellamy and her team at the Chermside Library, unofficially the busiest library in Brisbane, we will get there one day, Megan, and to Hillary at the Small But Mighty Grange Library, thank you so much for all you do for the community and for us. To the various teams across council like Compliance Development Services, Parks and Traffic, Matthew Pye, thank you for all the work you do in investigating and responding to residents' requests in a timely manner. And to the Facilities team for looking after my ward office, one day we will hang that whiteboard. 2025 is our year. I'd also like to give a special shout out to the customer service extraordinaire and our neighbour Al, who's always happy to help us with those extra curly questions from residents. To all of the PAs, policy officers, all the staff in the chairs offices and the Lord Mayor's office, thank you so much for supporting me and my ward office with all of our questions, no matter how silly, and following through on all those requests and wearing all the hats, we appreciate everything you do for us. And finally, to my incredible ward staff, Anthony and Kayla, I'm so proud of what we've achieved this year as a team. You both go above and beyond for our residents, you show kindness and compassion and you have a lot of fun in the process. It's, being a councillor, you are the most accessible level of government and I think that everybody I speak to talks about what wonderful interactions they have with the office. You've helped me to do this job and I couldn't be more proud of what we've done this year. Thank you. And in closing, I'll just reiterate my thanks to the entire council workforce. Together, all of us have made a real difference in 2024, that's why we're all in this game, to make a difference. I thank you, I hope you have a really restful period over Christmas and a really successful new year and yes, please, don't let it rain too much. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak to the motion of appreciation for our council workforce. I, you know, am only, I was reminded the other day actually, that I am only relatively new to this role, having been here for a short year and a half, but I think one of the key takeaways from being afforded the privilege to represent my community and the people of Brisbane is the opportunity to serve, but also to work alongside some of the most incredible people who share those same values and wake up every single day wanting to make a difference, whether, no matter what their role is, no matter how many hours they work every single week, you know, whether they are doing the important work of moving people around Brisbane on a bus or a city cat or a ferry or they're even the people who, you know, the, the public space officers who I ran into just a couple of weeks ago, who were taking such care to really make sure that all of our local memorials were in tip-top condition and you could tell, I think, every interaction with anyone who works for council, the pride that they take in serving their communities is completely unmatched. And so to have this opportunity to put on record from all sides of politics, our thanks for the work that they do every single day, you know, we're just the politicians, we're the faces on the, on the offices, but we're only as good as the people who serve the organisation. And so there are just a few specific thanks I wanted to make today. Of course, the council staff who support us and local residents in the Morningside Ward in particular, every single day we get literally hundreds of emails, we're in a high-profile location, so lots of walk-bys, lots of regulars who have lots of very interesting questions. I know I've certainly learned a lot about all of the ability that council has to make a difference to people's everyday lives. So I particularly want to thank the council staff who support us in the ward office and local residents each and every single day. I want to start with, yeah, thanking the public space officers who work so hard to make our parks and gardens beautiful. I know often I'm out walking in the mornings with my family and you'll see officers just taking that extra bit of care to, you know, make sure any bits of rubbish that were left behind were picked up or, you know, maintaining the garden beds or, you know, cleaning our streets and those sorts of things, no matter, it might seem small, but it actually makes a community an amazing place to live and why people either choose to stay in the area or choose to move themselves and their families there and really make a life there. I want to thank the TPO team, yes, lots of complicated questions and requests, but always very diligent in responding, no matter what the outcome is. Development Services, I think, yeah, a lot of people think that, you know, maybe your ward office staff or you as a councillor are, you know, automatically a town planner when you get this job, so they have been incredibly supportive in not only making sure I'm kept up to date with information and helped answer a lot of complicated questions, but have actually been really proactive in helping answer what I think are really important questions on the future of what the Morningside Ward looks like and how developments interface with that, so I'm really, really grateful for their help. Also want to shout out the arborist team, we have, you know, actually an amazing heritage park in our area and we've had some really challenging issues with, you know, fig trees that are over hundreds of years old and the arborist team have really been quite caring in the way that they've dealt with that. I think, you know, there's always the opportunity that these things are seen as trivial, but each of those trees is named for a local person who has sacrificed their life and they've really taken a lot of care. Out of that, we have, you know, unfortunate issues with tree disease and rot and stuff and they've been really proactive in working alongside me, the community and the Historical Society and, you know, descendants of those families who are still living in the area today, so I'm really grateful for their help. The Lifestyle and Communities team, in particular Matt and Andrea, who are always so responsive, our local compliance officers, City Standards team, the field services staff that work in the depot, particularly on the one in Redfern Street, that's such an important community hub, Belimba Library team, the team in the contact centre, Morningside Ward Outcomes Manager Sarah, the teams who help us resolve issues and deliver projects for local roads, parks and drainage every day, PSLOs, Grants team, the team in City Hall, we're so grateful for everything you do. And last but not least, my Morningside Ward Office staff, Courtney, Alex and Cameron, so, so grateful for everything you do.
Further speakers, councillor Gibney.
Thank you, madam chair. I rise to speak on the motion of appreciation and reflect on the incredible support I've received in my first year as councillor. As someone newly elected in 2024, stepping into a long-held seat could have been daunting, but the warm welcome and guidance from council staff made all the difference. From day one, I've been met with patience, understanding and plenty of smiles, even when I sent... even when I sent tasks to the wrong teams. I'd like to acknowledge some standout individuals who have gone above and beyond. First, I'd like to thank Shannon Clark. Shannon's professionalism and knack for turning my over excited ideas into actionable plans has been invaluable. Her personal, personable approach, quick responses and ability to navigate sensitive matters makes her truly irreplaceable. I thank you so much, Shannon. To Chris Jamison, thank you for your unwavering positivity and willingness to meet with local residents when required. Your can do attitude has made a huge impact on my role and our ward. Matt Trevor, now, even though now in a new role, I'm grateful for your work supporting our community groups with their leased sites. I look forward to continuing to collaborate with you in your new role. Brendan Whittaker, a true guardian of the Winham Manley foreshore. Your expertise and long time local knowledge are so valuable and respected. Thanks also to Benny and Brian from TNO and for their tireless support with road issues and to Jordan for your help navigating our compliance needs. A big shout out to Dion and the Safer Communities team. For all your sensitive work supporting our vulnerable community members. From committee meetings, I've been inspired by the vibrant cultural programmes under councillor Howard's portfolio. Brisbane Festival, the seniors concert, the Cube Effect are some shining examples. I want to thank Julie Byth, Simon Alexander and your teams for all that you do for our city. In councillor Davis's portfolio, the passion of the news team for conservation and sustainability is extraordinary. Thank you to Wade Fitzgerald and Elizabeth Sisson for, and their entire teams for all that they do for the recreation and environments in our, in our city. To Theresa Wyatt and the Winham Library team. Theresa, your creativity and dedication have always been exceptional, even when we worked together in our past careers. And it's so wonderful that I get to see you now and continue working with you at the Winham Library. A heartfelt thanks to the unsung heroes of our city. The bus drivers, the waste truck drivers, the ferry captains, the parks teams, the road crews and the cleaners. You keep Brisbane moving and we're so thankful for all of you. To Tim Wright, thank you for stepping into the CEO position this year and we appreciate your leadership. To Damon and his team for ensuring that council has the right staff in the right spots is really, really important. To the IT team, Billy, Aaron and Brody for keeping us connected. And to Billy here in the chamber, who is always filling my water glass with a smile. I appreciate you more than you know. To my neighbouring ward officers, Debbie, Ashley and Ashley at Chandler and Carrie, Brooke and Rachel at Doughboy. Thank you for always taking our calls. To the incredible Contact Centre team who are, who make our community, take our community calls in such a friendly and professional manner. Councillor Murphy and councillor Cunningham wanted to make sure we thanked Sarah Canham and Tristan McCrae for their consistent support. We are thankful to all the teams that support the east side of our wonderful city. Finally, to my Winham Manley Ward team, Paige, who's now currently on maternity leave, Tom and my pillar Tony. You are the backbone of our ward office and I could definitely not do this job without you. Sorry if I've missed anyone because I'm still meeting everybody in the council team, but hopefully next year I won't miss anybody out. I'm truly thankful to be part of such a collaborative and caring council community. And here's to all of you having a wonderful Christmas. I wish that you have a happy and safe festive season, that you get to spend time and have a break with the people that you love, doing the things that you love. So thank you very much.
Further speakers, councillor John Law.
Thank you, Chair. I also rise to acknowledge the motion of appreciation for council staff. As a new councillor on a steep learning curve, all staff have been so responsive, willing to share their knowledge and expertise, which is extremely valued to me and our community. There's simply too many people to name here today. All of you are incredible. I really appreciate the time and your energy and dedication. I also would like to thank my Paddington Ward staff. You're amazing. You all go the extra mile to support me and our community and I value you so much. Thank you so much.
Further speakers, councillor Wolf.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I rise to speak on the motion of appreciation and to acknowledge the hard work of Brisbane City Council's dedicated officers. Across our great city and especially in the west, we are grateful for their support. Whether it's maintaining parks, repairing potholes or ensuring our bus network runs smoothly, their contributions are essential to keeping Brisbane moving. It's easy to overlook the behind the scenes work that keeps our city clean, organised and connected. But today, we must take a moment to recognise their great efforts. On behalf of the Jamboree Office, councillor Hutton, the Pullenvale Office, councillor Adaman, the Gap Office, councillor Toomey and the Walter Taylor Office, myself, I would like to highlight a few officers whose work over the past year have gone above and beyond our expectations. So thank you to these dedicated people. Firstly, thank you, Shane Klepper, for your genuine efforts in working with numerous western councillors to achieve outcomes that we are seeking. Thank you also to Grant Murray and the broader PPI team for your efforts with parks, civil, arb and cars, including Chris Jamison, Peter Simpson, Julian Ricks, Rebecca Deslanders, Brad McFadden, Chris Goopy, David Graham and Maverick Hornman. Thank you also to Peter for your advice on roads and drainage grates and other engineering matters. Thank you to Steve Shoemaker and his advice and assistance with a range of matters pertaining to Mount Coother and all of those bushland reserves in our western suburbs. Thanks to Simon Butterworth for his advice on built environment and Simon Fox for his work with the many environmental and bush care groups within the western suburbs. We'd also like to say thanks to PSO Greenspace for their team at Darre Depot, for their ongoing care and maintenance for our memorial gardens each year. Thanks to our Connected Communities team and in particular Mitch Barlow for his work and assistance, for example, with the Old Tuong Bow site, the Witten Barracks Community Hub and the Kenmore Community Centre project. And thanks to Richard Hines for his hard work with the upgrade to the Bell Bowery Pool. Thanks also to Matt Lani and the Compliance team for everything that you do to keep things running smoothly. And a special thanks to Nick Cooper and Gail Smith, who support our local clubs and community groups every day. Thank you to Annabelle Matthews, Brendan Gillum and Mark Vinnie and the Development Services team for your ongoing support and answering our many questions. Thanks also to Stacey, Louis, Andrea, Charmaine and the Mr Cups team for your ongoing works with the Moghl Road upgrade and for getting the job done on the Walter Taylor Bridge Works early. Natural Environment, Water and Sustainability, Wade Fitzgerald and Sarah Bishop for your assistance with the Old Tuong Bow site and for the Tringa Playground Park. Thank you to Kylie Olsen and the entire team at Indrapilly Library and to Julia Tree and the whole team at Tuong Library and team leader Liz Denning at Mount Ominy Library. Thank you to Steph and Matt, TPO team for your ongoing efforts in keeping our roads safe. Thank you to our entire team here in the chamber who look after us every Tuesday session. Now to our ward staff in the west, Adele, Brittany, Helen, Sarah, Linda, Ben, Marty, Aaron, Paul, Michaela and to the Walter Taylor team, Kylie and Melissa. This is no ordinary job and we appreciate the support that you provide our offices and our communities at large. We would be lost without you. Thank you to all the team in the Lord Mayor's office. We appreciate you. When we look back on the past year, none of our achievements would have been possible without the dedication, expertise and hard work of all of our officers. On behalf of the people of Brisbane, I sincerely thank each and every one of you. Your commitment goes, does not go unnoticed and the positive impact in your work across our great community is greatly appreciated. Your efforts inspire others to continue to grow, to make our beautiful city even better. Thank you for your outstanding service and for helping to make Brisbane even better. Wishing everybody and their families a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to thank our wonderful council officers who have been a godsend since I was first elected in April this year. Like councillor Marks, in particular, I wanted to thank Grant Murray, my PPI Outcomes Manager, who has gone above and beyond to support myself, my staff, Jennifer Fahima and Hudson at the office to create great outcomes. He's even walked the streets of me with, in Polara, so we can both plan and visualise possible solutions for residents, given the complexity of this area. Also to Nick Cooper, thank you for teaching me how to use the council mapping software that changed my life. Jennifer, my senior advisor, also helped me open my office on day one where we were flooded with inquiries. She's been my rock and I'm so grateful to have a knowledgeable team assisting Callumbell Ward residents with their 20 years of work in Brisbane City Council. And I also wanted to thank Hope, who was there to help me set up my office with IT. He was one of the first council officers that I met from this organisation and it gave me a really good impression of what was to come. So I just wanted to give a special thanks to him and it's always great whenever I run into him at City Hall. Another memory that I'll never forget this year is when Mo Hassan, the coordinator of waterways and drainage, actually came directly on site to help me rescue a baby duck from a stormwater drain earlier this year. He literally ripped open a metal grate with his hands and then after hours of a family of ducks quacking at the drain, never seen anything like that before and the whole street came out to help. So that was really wholesome to see. Another wholesome moment from a council officer, from Fleet Services Brett King and Leanne Mason of Fleet Services. Long story short, I left a pot plant that I was going to give to a local hairdresser who shut down their business in my glove box when I was giving a car back. And then basically the plant sort of died and then they revived it and gave it back to me. So very grateful for, for their very nice help. Never thought that would happen, so thank you so much. You guys are the best. Yeah, I guess it was just so busy this year. And finally, I thank all the council support staff, Damon, the on site maintenance crews and last but not least, my amazing and unofficial Callumbell Youth Advisory Team, Sami Manu, Fahima Amati, Isaac Chen and Shrada Makar. And we also have a former Lord Mayor's Youth Advisory participant in the gallery here today, Joshua Dickman. Super sad you went to Canberra, but I'm sure you're on to much better things over there. And we're also especially excited this Saturday to launch our first Callumbell Youth Advisory Council at our Christmas markets, where we'll have also our young leaders coordinating fresh markets every couple of months next year, hopefully every month if we do it well. I always thought as a young person myself that they should be given a chance to take on more responsibility if that's something they want, so that's why that's exactly what we're doing in Callumbell. This Christmas, I'm also thinking of everyone, including those who will be alone without a home, with all the strength and love. I'm also wishing everyone a very jolly Christmas and look forward to working hard together next year. Thank you so much for making my first few months a welcoming experience in this chamber. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Strong.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Listen, I rise to enter the debate, not so much of the day, the thank you to council officers. And I want to kick off with my great appreciation to my ward team. Pam McCready and Jenny Lamb, two, two of the hardest working people I've ever had the pleasure of working with. Pam has been with me right from the beginning and, and she really is a great advisor. She's picked up a lot of council knowledge, of course, over those eight years going on to nine now. And Jenny, who just started with this last, well, really last November, but it really didn't kick off until this new year. She's just picked, picked up the job so well. She's terrific on social media. She's of a different generation than Pam and myself. And it's really nice to have that generational difference in the, in the office. But they, and of course, we have that election this year and I'm sure all the, all the other, other councillors here really, not, not that they actually work on the election or reelection during working hours, but I'm sure most, a lot of them, of course, do a lot of that work for us, for the election after hours and on the weekends as well. So they're, they're, I just can't speak too highly of, of these two. And I just wanted to kick off my appreciation with, with the team this year as well. Now, following off from that, of course, the councillor support, support group, of course, Damon and Penny now. My, my team tells me that they are wonderful to deal with. They're very professional in the way they deal with those issues that come up from time to time. They're a great resource for the ward office, just to keep everyone on track, including myself, as to what we, what we need to, what we need to undertake in order to support our, our constituents. Also, it's, and of course, Grant Murray, the, the Outcomes Manager, who's been now with me, I think, or been helping us now for about three years now. Again, came from outside council, as councillor Marks said, but he's just been a unbelievable effective outcomes manager, even though he didn't really have much knowledge in regards to how council operates. But he's really, he's really done a terrific job for me and I'm sure many others that have him as outcome manager over the last three years. You know, we, we give him the information that he needs in order to do his job and then he, he just schedules the, schedules what's, what's, what's on the list and, and just gets on with it and, and keeps us informed on a weekly basis as to what's happening. And I'm sure other outcomes officers do the same thing. Also want to make special mention, of course, Peter Sitma and, and Chris Daly, who have been looking after the, the lake and the other waterways within the ward. They've done a terrific job with the lake. We just had a little bit of an outbreak with, with some of that blue green algae, but with all the rain that we've had in November, it's, it's really, I suppose, it's put it, it's sort of kept it in check a little bit. Although we have a few worried residents at the moment and they're worried about that blue green algae, as, as I am as well. Our transport guys, of course, Raj and, and Kieran, TPL guys. Again, they've been sort of with me right from the beginning as well. And so we've, we had a really good working relationship. And again, two really professional guys that know their stuff. And, and then when things arise and there's some issues with either yellow lines or, or anything to do with, anything to do with TPO, what they, when they tell me, when they give me the answer to the question I ask them, they're very credible, very believable and, and we, we try to, we try to address some of the concerns, of course, that residents have. And especially in regards to parking on, in residential roads, that's, that's a big one. And it is, I'm sure, with, with a number of other councillors here as well. IT, of course, they've been mentioned, but I'm going to mention them again because we couldn't, we couldn't do our jobs without these things called computers and communications in general. Billy, Aaron, Craig and Hope, and Hopewell. Again, my, my team is really, really thankful that they've, they, they respond in a, in a, in a appropriate time when things go wrong. And I do appreciate their, their input and their help when things do go wrong. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak briefly on the motion of appreciation. It really is a tale of two cities when you sit here and listen to the LMP councillors and their interactions with council officers and then you think and reflect on the year on yours. But I'd like to start by acknowledging the good, which is the service delivery staff who are on the frontline at Brisbane City Council, whether that's in waste, street cleaning, libraries, the call centre, bus drivers, parks officers, to name a few. There are a huge number of frontline council officers out there who are putting their heart and soul into their job. And like other councillors here today, I thank them very much for their hard work. I also want to acknowledge all the support staff that help our officers run and help council run behind the scenes. There are a lot of staff who work very hard in those areas. And I'm not going to outline them all today, but certainly there are a lot of people who keep our offices running and council running to support the organisation. So I want to thank them as well. I feel very strongly though, as I've said in past years in this place, that they are being let down by the leadership of the Lord Mayor and his civic cabinet and the senior management, the executive level management of Brisbane City Council, the organisation. Without question, there are massive problems in Brisbane City Council. You know, councillor Givney's experiences, traffic engineers get back to her. Well, six months later, we're still waiting for a sign to go out my way. So there, there really is some problems with, I think, some areas of the city being prioritised while others aren't. There's clearly a problem with funding priority. And at the senior executive level, those officers are in a position to ensure that council can carry out its charter fairly and transparently, and yet they do not do that. Time after time, the officers... time, the officers, the very senior officers I'm talking about, work with the Lord Mayor to fund and resource projects only in LMP areas to the exclusion of many others. And that problem, that fundamental disparity within Brisbane City Council, the politicisation of Brisbane City Council, is simply becoming more stark. They're also being let down by funding cuts. Not only the Lord Mayor's cuts to last year's budget, but his funding cuts to this year's budget. Now, on radio this morning, the Lord Mayor claimed there was more money than ever for road resurfacing and potholes. But we know in the budget that he announced just in June, he cut that funding by around $10 million. And that has had a real impact on the crumbling roads all over Brisbane. So the Lord Mayor might say there's more money than ever, but that's not what is in his budget and that is not what residents are seeing on the ground. And that is putting frontline council officers under pressure to fix problems that they have no resources and funding to do. That blows out the timeframes to fix the footpaths, to fix the roads, to resurface, to trim the trees, to plant new trees. Six months of the year and barely a tree's been planted. These are the problems of poor leadership combined with political management of this council. And we're also seeing, of course, just even in answering questions and notice today, that 572 permanent council staff, that doesn't include the cuts to all the temporary and contract staff, 572 permanent staff left council this year. They have been replaced with just 99 people. So where nearly 600 council officers were doing the job that they're employed to do, serving the people of Brisbane, they've left for a whole range of reasons. And they have been replaced with just 99 replacement staff. Now, there is no way, no way that people can get their job done and more in the environment they're in with less people. And we can see that on the ground. Now, this is a failure, let me be clear, of leadership from the Lord Mayor and his civic cabinet and the very senior levels of council executive leadership. It is appalling that there are excuses made for problems time after time after time. It's no longer acceptable that this council operates as a political organisation. It's no longer acceptable that this council cuts essential services to our community. It's wrong.
Council Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I rise to speak on this motion of appreciation or gratitude for our employees and just like to acknowledge the great work of all our council staff. First off, I would like to acknowledge my own team, Lisa, Tracy and Sue. Those three staff have been with me now over 20 years, providing service for the residents of Maruka Ward. And we are very, work very well together, a very enjoyable team to work with, very professional and a bit of fun. And I look forward to our Christmas lunch again. I also need to acknowledge the great work of Camille and Thrice, who are in the office. And can I just say that the service you provide just is such an important link between what I do as the representative, but what council does in terms of getting outcomes for the community. I need to jump back to December 23 and say, the week before Christmas last year, we had major storms in Maruka Ward and for some reason it just hit Maruka. Couple of storms combined, oh, and a little bit of Tennyson, a little bit of Tennyson. So the week before Christmas, we had over 600 tree jobs. We had massive amount of work that came through the office. That was logged by my office in two days, so 600 jobs. And they were largely cleaned up in a week. We had crews from all over Brisbane coming to do that work. And I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to those staff. Because that was a really big thing to do the week before Christmas and was a huge outcome to get for the residents of Brisbane. I also need to acknowledge the Lord Mayor and I did talk about that and we were able to get that result. So thank you, Lord Mayor. It was a good result for the residents in Maruka Ward and Tennyson Wood. Now, I always have a little bit of a naughty and nice list. I do like this list to keep it all year. So I want to do my nice list first. So and there's three people on the nice list I want to, there's many, many, many people on the nice list. But the three, top three people I want to acknowledge this year, first off is Shannon Clark. Shannon Clark is my liaison officer. Shannon, one person has taken the role of 10 people that we used to have in the regional team, has taken that role on and has really done exceptionally well. And she doesn't just work for me, she works for about five other councillors as well. I think of Shannon, I've said this to Shannon, I think of Shannon like a little bluish character. She's just running around doing jobs everywhere and she's able to get results. And she's very effective and very good at getting results out of the organisation. So thank you, Shannon. I also need to acknowledge the work of Chris Jamison in trying to get outcomes from our news branch and trying to get outcomes for the flooded residents in Rockleigh. And Chris, we just need to keep trying with that. And also Kristin Booth, who's trying to fix up the issues that we have in PPI and PSO. So there are many, many other staff that I deal with regularly. I'd like to thank them as well for their great work, their professionalism and customer service. Now, my naughty list, this list has certainly grown this year. And there's particularly since the results of the election, where some of the naughty officers have appeared and raised their head. And that concerns me a bit. I certainly am most concerned when it impacts my residents. Particularly concerned when residents, it's interesting, as you said, Councillor Johnston, how illuminating it is today when you hear from LMP councillors about the level of service they're getting. It's very illuminating to, yeah, to hear that and to hear the different sorts of levels of service provided across the city. And the way, for me and my residents, issues aren't being resolved. So there are a number of council officers on that list, but I'm not going to name them. I'd like to wish all officers a happy Christmas and all the best 25 and look forward to working with you all next year. Cheers.
Further speakers? No further speakers. Lord Mayor, right of reply? I'll now put the motion of appreciation. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. And I'll remind councillors to sign the appreciation when you come up. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Chair.
Try again. That's it. Okay. Oh, it's all right. I'll speak loud.
We've got it.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,752nd meeting held on Tuesday, the 26th of November 2024, be received, taken as read and confirmed. Seconded.
Has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that the minutes of the 4,752nd meeting of council, held on the 26th of November 2024, be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. I would now like to call on Mrs Margaret Gamble, who will address the chamber on investment of transport infrastructure near the state hockey centre at Morningside. And can I remind all councillors that under the provisions of section 32a of the meeting's local law, no debate or interjections will be permitted during this agenda item. Ms Gamble, please proceed when you are ready. You have five minutes.
Madam Chair, Lord Mayor, fellow councillors, I'm not a councillor, sorry, councillors. Thank you for allowing me to address you today. I've come to you as a resident who, long-term resident of Hawthorn and Morningside. I've lived in that area for three decades now and raised two beautiful, respectful young men. In that time, I've been involved in dragon boating down at the Belimba 18 footers club, which was moved out of there to the Combsley Beach area in 2008. I've actively participated in a committee meeting, a community meeting in 2010, looking at why or how we could possibly get a green bridge from Belimba over to Tenerife. And I've also been heavily involved in, as a volunteer manager for a not-for-profit organisation that had lots of work associated with Food Bank. Now, all of those connections have led me here today. I'm here to ask, where is the infrastructure money for a city cat stop suggesting at the end of Colonel Gardiner Drive? On that, because I'll explain why I think that would be a great location, I have actually put this forward since 2008 on regular communications with council and received no positive outcome. I also want to know if you could think about possibly putting in a green bridge on the south side that would link people between the areas of the Gateway Bridge and Belimba. The reason being that that area is now becoming very popular. On the southern side, not the North Shore side, the opposite side, has become and is becoming extremely popular. We have a state hockey centre along Colonel Gardiner Drive. We have a local circus, use that area. We have the Combsley Aquatic Centre. We now have the dragon boating down at the wharf there. That area is, has absolutely no public transport access. This also impacts the Food Bank because they rely heavily on volunteers. As we, as we all know, and especially myself as a previous volunteer manager, most volunteers are my age or older. We and they are regular public transport users. You've got the state hockey centre, the Combsley Aquatic Centre, you've got the dragon boaters, you've got the circus, all competing for car spaces that are just not available. This wouldn't be an issue if there was a public transport solution, but there isn't one. The reason I suggested and have for many years since 2008, for a city cat stop in that area, is that there was nothing past Apollo Road. You had Bretsworf on the other side and Apollo Road, and then North Shore opened and it became this hub on the other side. But there's nothing linking that side to the Combsley Beach area, which is right across from there. It would be a quick skip across. You'd have to drive over the Gateway Bridge to get across, or you have to go ride the Story Bridge, both of which are fairly lengthy ways to do it. If you go the Gateway Bridge, it's not only the other part of that, it's that it's an expense that you, we probably would prefer not to use. So I'm just putting it to this group, if you could consider a public transport solution for that area, so that those particular activities along Colonel Gardiner Drive have that option. And also, you've got your volunteers that access Second Bite and Food Bank, who could also be benefited by a public transport solution. The last thing I want to bring your attention to is the only access point to those activities is Colonel Gardiner Drive. I don't know if you know the piece of road I'm talking about, but it's disgusting. The access point to Litton Road, that's the only place you can enter it, the minute there is a slight bit of rainfall, so you can imagine what it was like on Sunday, absolutely no way you could exit that street, that piece of road with safety. So if you're not going to put in a public transport solution, my other request is, can you please improve the drainage so that intersection is safe? Because at the moment, it's extremely unsafe.
Thank you, Ms Gamble.
Thank you.
If you'd like to take a second, I'll now call on councillor Murphy to respond.
Thank you very much, Ms Gamble, for taking the time to come in to address us and council about access to the Queensland Hockey Centre. And I must admit, I am familiar, I always thought it was Cole Gardiner Drive, but I might be corrected, it might be Colonel Gardiner Drive. But I'll take my instruction from councillor Collier on the correct pronunciation of that. But look, we, we know this is a hub for local sporting groups and clubs and there's several clubs that call that peninsula home. We absolutely want the Australian Olympic team in 2032 and the Paralympic team as well to be full of homegrown heroes. And of course, that starts with supporting our local sports clubs and facilities. I want to talk through some of the suggestions that you've made to us today, specifically the suggestion for a new city cat terminal and of course, the new bridge between Belimba and the Northern River Bank. Starting with the Green Bridge, you are very right in that there's some distance between the Gateway Bridge and the next river crossing, which is actually the Story Bridge. You may not know that a few years ago, actually quite some years ago now, about 10 years ago, the former Labor State Government actually did a study into the feasibility of a bridge between Belimba and Tenerife. Ultimately, that study found that a bridge in that location was not feasible. The reason being that the bridge would require a 30 metre clearance above the river, which is the same height as the Story Bridge. So you can think of the deck being quite high. I'm sure, as you know, that part of the city is quite flat on both sides. And so we would need to do significant ramping and the bridge would be at quite a height into both Belimba and to Tenerife. So that would be quite imposing on the local community. We think for that reason, the state government did progress with that proposal. However, I would encourage you to reach out to your local state member, Di Farmer, to request a copy of the report that was done by DTM. I understand she has it. And to have a look into that work that was done, the feasibility of that bridge. We have been, she's previously been an advocate of that connection in the past. However, ultimately it was her state government that didn't progress with the bridge in this location, we think, due to those constraints that we've been talking about. Obviously as well, the cost of any bridge there would be in the hundreds of millions of dollars. Now, you also mentioned the possibility of another city cat terminal further east of North Shore, Hamilton or Apollo Road for residents on the south side of the river. Of course, we are always looking for ways to improve our city cat network. In fact, just this morning, we announced the reopening of the Mowray, Mowray Park Terminal on the 9th of December, so next week. Of course, the location that you're talking about at Combsley Reserve is quite close to the existing Apollo Road Terminal. And I accept that they serve different residents, different communities. However, Apollo Road is one of the council's least used ferry terminals. And so we need to consider how many people would use a terminal in a similar location in that stretch of the river. We understand the Belimba Barracks development is coming and that has the potential to drive growth in that catchment. However, we would like to see what that would do to patronage before considering a terminal further downstream. Of course, there's some destinations like the Hockey Centre, but without the residential catchment that actually supports the patronage there, it would be very difficult for this terminal to maintain patronage demand and therefore make that terminal construction good value for money outcome for ratepayers. So we also know that there's a strong rail corridor through this part of the city, which does make the attraction of the time it takes for a city cat to get from further downstream into the river, an unattractive alternative to the rail network and also the bus network as well. So you might not know, Ms Gamble, but it takes 90 minutes to get from one end of the river on the city cat network all the way to the end of the network at UQ St Lucia. So it is quite a long trip. And we know that we don't compete alone. We compete across a multimodal, you know, multimodal group of transport options for residents to choose. However, I will say, Ms Gamble, we are undertaking a strategic review of the city cat network in 2025. And we'd be keen to hear what Brisbane residents' thoughts are on the future of our network, as well as your thoughts as well. And I would encourage you next year to make a submission to that review. And I'm about out of time. But thank you again, Ms Gamble, for coming in. We certainly appreciate the time you've taken to address us.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms Gamble, for coming in today. Councillors will now move to question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a civic cabinet chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, earlier this year, the Shrinna Council was overwhelmingly re-elected with a mandate to keep Brisbane moving. 2024 has been a massive year for the Lord Mayor and our team. Can you give us a wrap-up of the achievements of the Shrinna Council in Can you give us a wrap up of the achievements of the Shrima Council in 2024 when it comes to transport?
Councillor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I can, councillor Parry. We know in March this year, the Lord, Lord Mayor and the Shrima Council made a promise to keep Brisbane moving now and into the future. We've spent every day since committed to delivering better transport infrastructure and more services more often to the people of Brisbane. And while I know councillor Parry is eagerly awaiting her Spotify wrapped for the year, I'm happy to give a transport wrapped of what we've achieved in 2024. We started this year with the opening of the Breakfast Creek Ywogara Green Bridge, and that exceeded all expectations. It is multi-award winning, usage is double our projections, and it wasn't just delivered on time, it was delivered under budget, but we're not done just yet. We'll finish 2024 by opening another bridge, the Kangaroo Point Bridge, on the 15th of December. It's a bridge that's been talked about for centuries, for literally centuries, but people will be walking on sunshine across that bridge in less than two weeks' time, thanks to the vision of this Lord Mayor and the Shrima Council. As well as these bridges, Citylink Cycleway is moving on up as we extend it from east Brisbane to west end. Last month, we started the first Safer Schools precinct and celebrated the 20th anniversary of active school travel. 2024 also saw our next generation immobility contracts and councillors, just like the Beatles, we said hello goodbye in 2024. It was quite a magical mystery tour because we said hello to Beam, then we said goodbye to Beam, and then we said hello to Neuron once again. But Chair, we aren't just delivering on active transport, we're also delivering on public transport. This year, we worked tirelessly to deliver a landmark public transport funding agreement with the state government. We took the state government to task in June with hundreds of bill wars across Brisbane. We asked Brisbane residents to back our buses, and the state government held out for a while. They said we were just a local government asking for more money. I could have gone with a few songs here, Chair. I could have gone with a few songs, but I'm going to go with Waterloo by ABBA because they couldn't escape if they wanted to. We were everywhere, Chair. We secured that deal for fairer funding for our buses to deliver for Brisbane. And the song says, "That history book is on the shelf, it's always repeating itself", but for once, it's not repeating itself because we now have a great relationship with the state government.
Thank you. Just one moment. Councillor Collier, please do not call out. Councillor Collier. Several times you were calling out, please. Also, keep your conversations quiet. Councillor Murphy.
Madam Chair, I know they don't like to hear it, but we have a great relationship with the state government because with the LMP's permanent 50 cent fares, we know that we are now in the club of the cheapest public transport fares in the country. How good is that? And how good is it to be a Queenslander? Now, we know 50 cent fares have resulted in a huge increase in patronage on our City Cats and ferries. This year, we upgraded Dockside, we brought the City Cats to Howard Smith Wharves. This is now one of the city's most popular terminals. We had 60,000 passengers a month there. We continued with our, our delivery of next generation, generation four City Cats. And of course, who let the dogs out, Chair? It was our wonderful ferries team with the transformation of our City Cats into Bluey and Bingo. And Chair, that is not all because from Monday, the 9th of December, the City Cats will be backstreet back at Mowray Park. Early next year, we'll double the frequency of our Kitty Cat services, which means a new cross river service every 15 minutes. It's a bit like Cat Stevens' father and son, Chair. We will look after both the City Cats and the Kitty Cats. Last but by no means least, Chair, it's the Brisbane Metro. In 2024, we opened new platforms at the Cultural Centre and UQ Lakes. We completed the new Metro Depot at Rochedale, the largest in the country, and we finished the excavation of the Adelaide Street Tunnel. Of course, we brought the Metro to life by Evanescence, that one councillor Adam, councillor Adam, in October, with passengers able to catch our most beautiful bus during the 169 preview. And this Sunday, Chair, we revealed the start date with the new Kid in Town by the Eagles, the new premiere, David Christopher Lee. We confirmed our plan for the stage implementation of Brisbane Metro.
Please, councillor, point of order.
Councillor Adam has shouted out three times. I'm finding it very difficult to hear.
Councillor Cassidy, I don't uphold your point of order, and I'm not going to go and tell you again that you totally understand.
You should take some remedial action rather than just being biased against councillor Collier in isolation.
Councillor, we've had this discussion before and you know very well that people are able to support the speaker, as you did earlier, with your own speaker.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Yes, Madam Chair, last week and the week before, you specifically said, "I could not make supportive interjections in support of what the speaker was saying." So why are you allowing LMP councillors to do this while I wasn't allowed to?
Councillor Murphy.
I was talking about the successful 169 trial, Madam Chair, and with that confidence, man, we'll be ready to start permanent metro services on the M2 on the 28th of January, just 56 days away. The best part, Chair, is it means a very good year for Metro in 2025. Chair, I want to cap off by saying that 2024 has been huge for transport in Brisbane. I want to thank all the staff in Brisbane Infrastructure and Transport for Brisbane for the incredible work they do for our city. This year, more than any year, has proven to me that in life and in politics, you only get what you give. And Team Shrima is going to continue to give 100% for the people of Brisbane into next year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speak, further questions. Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, your regime recently lied about the data used to demonise homeless people living in tents across Brisbane. You also lied by saying the Queensland Fire Department told you about dangerous...
Councillor Collier, I asked you to rephrase that. You know very well that we do not use that terminology in, it is a decision that I have made as Chair, and you know full well, so you either rephrase it or ask a different question.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Well, that is contrary to your ruling from last week.
Councillor, it is not, I do not uphold your point of order. Please resume your seat.
Well, I move dissent in your ruling.
Seconded.
Dissent in my ruling by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The noes have it. Further questions? Are you asking a question, councillor Collier? Then do so.
Lord Mayor, you said that the Queensland Fire Department told you about the dangerous unauthorised fires in homeless camps, but that wasn't true. You lied about why you were cutting first fire forever funding when we...
Point of order, Madam Chair. Councillor Collier has used a word that you've directed her to not use in direct defiance of your ruling. Could you please, could you please provide advice to both her and the room on that topic?
Councillor Collier, either you modify your question?
Point of order, Chair.
Or rule it out of order. Point of order, councillor Collier.
Could you just clarify? Last week, you said that we couldn't, you called someone a liar, but that the word you could describe and act as a lie.
No, I did not, councillor, councillor, I have not. And we have been told not to use that word. The only, no, councillor Collier, not that I, I don't want to debate this, someone repeated what councillor Griffiths had said, and that was what they were repeating, and I had asked him not to. Ask your question, or we'll move on to another councillor. Councillor Massey? Do not call out across the chamber, you are warned.
Lord Mayor, you said you were launching the Brisbane Metro early, and your story kept changing about why it got pulled overnight. Another lie. You lied about knowing the Story Bridge.
Councillor Collier, I caution you on unsuitable meeting conduct because you have not rectified what I've asked you not to say.
Lord Mayor, one day you said you didn't know about the Story Bridge needing help years ago, and then you actually do. And now, all of a sudden, you're crying poor to the federal government, again, not telling the truth that you can't find the funds for a $4.5 million business case when it comes to the Mogal Road project. You told hurting businesses, businesses and business owners that the project would be done early this year. Another lie.
Councillor Collier. Change it. Do not use the word lie. Councillor. Councillor Johnson, do not call out.
Lord Mayor, you told hurting business owners that the project would be done early this year, but that wasn't true. It's now a year behind and double the cost. The people of Brisbane are being misled by your regime. Why can't you just be honest about your mistakes, apologise and take some responsibility?
Lord Mayor.
Well, Merry Christmas, everyone. We had an opportunity just before to say a simple thing, thank you. But Labour Party turned it into a party political slanging match. They couldn't simply say the words thank you, they had to play party politics. And... It's why nobody likes them. It is genuinely why nobody likes them and they keep losing, because they can't help but playing gutter politics, as we've seen in this question. There's one thing that I have always done, and that is accept responsibility. And if things, and if circumstances change, well then, absolutely, I'll front up and I'll explain what's happened and why.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor, one moment, please, Lord Mayor. You've asked your question and you are not able to call out across the chamber while it's being answered. It's, yes, it is councillor Collier and councillor Griffiths. If you don't like the answer, doesn't mean you can call out across the chamber. And I've told you many times to save it to GB if you have further things to say.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Was that just a ruling you just made?
Councillor Cassidy, it's, yes, I have told you many times, it's unsuitable meeting conduct while another councillor is on their feet. It is in the meeting's local law, and you are not to call out while the Lord Mayor is answering the question or any other councillor for that matter.
I move dissent in your ruling.
Dissent in my ruling has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being eight in favour and 18 against.
And the motion is lost. Councillors, resume your seats. Before I call you, Lord Mayor, just remind councillors, procedures for good order. Number 51. Number one, when the Chair speaks during the progress of a debate, any councillor then speaking or offering to speak shall immediately be seated. Two, every councillor present shall preserve strict silence so that the Chair may be heard without interruption. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Look, I understand this time of year, some people can get aggro. You know, there's a lot on at this time of year. Everyone's looking forward to a break. People can lash out, and we're seeing that unfortunately today. We've seen a massive loss, the lowest Labour vote ever in the city's history earlier this year. We've seen the most incompetent Labour government ever swept out of office just weeks ago.
Point of order.
And now it looks like the incompetent Albanese government is on the ropes as well.
One moment, Lord Mayor. Councillors. Councillor Cassidy, your point of order.
Point of order is on relevance. This isn't E and C, the Lord Mayor can't talk around the world unless he has to answer the question.
Thank you, councillor. Lord Mayor.
And so I was just illustrating maybe why the Labour Party is so belligerent, nasty, and ungrateful to the council staff at this point of year.
Councillor Collier, your point of order.
I just want to clarify what your ruling was on councillor Cassidy's...
The Lord Mayor is coming to the question, to answering the question, councillor Collier.
So what is your ruling exactly?
If he is given the opportunity.
What is your ruling exactly?
Thank you, councillor Collier.
I just, I don't understand.
The Lord Mayor is answering the question.
So is that your ruling that he is, that what he's saying is okay?
No, I don't uphold that point of order, and the Lord Mayor is answering the question. When given, councillor Strunk.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Collier.
I move dissent in your ruling.
Seconded.
Councillor Collier has moved dissent in my ruling, seconded by councillor Cassidy. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The noes have it.
Division.
Division. Division has been called by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being eight in favour and 18 against.
Division is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Now, let's deal with this issue, these issues one by one. First of all, Musgrave Park. You've heard in this chamber, you've heard time and time again, members of the public, You've heard in this chamber, you've heard time and time again, members of the public, people at work for charities, pleading with authorities to do something about the violent situation that has evolved in Musgrave Park. There have been hundreds of residents contact us. Our own public space liaison officers have said we do not feel safe going down there anymore. Labour and some do-gooders want to think that there's no problem there. Nothing to see here, everything's fine. Never mind the fires, the reported stabbings.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Collier, your point of order.
Just on relevance, my question was about the specific mistruth about saying publicly that the Queensland Fire Department told council about dangerous and unauthorized fires, which in an extraordinary and unprecedented move, the fire department came out and said that was not the case.
Councillor Collier.
The Lord Mayor is not being relevant to answering that question.
It was a very long question that you gave the Lord Mayor.
I'm being very specific.
And he is, he has five minutes to answer the question and he is coming to, he is answering your question and the issues that you raised. Lord Mayor.
Now, we know that both Labour and the Greens are just happy for people to live in tents permanently in parks across the city. They offer no solutions, they just say leave him alone, leave him alone. Whereas when safety is an issue, we step in, we work with other authorities, we take action. Now, in this specific case, an officer in the QPS contacted an officer in our corporate security unit in council and made this specific request. And so...
One moment, please, Lord Mayor.
QFES.
Thank you, but councillors, do not call out across the chamber. Councillor Collier, I warn you. Remain quiet while the Lord Mayor is answering your question.
Let me be clear. Someone from the fire department called one of our officers and made this request. Now councillor Collier, I hope you're not calling one of our officers a liar, because that would have seemed like...
Through the chair, through the chair, Lord Mayor. Point of order.
Because that would be inappropriate.
Point of order. Point of order councillor Johnston.
Yes, Madam Chairman, the Lord Mayor has just used a word that you have said is not allowed to be used in this chamber. What action are you going to take against him?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Madam Chairman, I raised a point of order and you just ignored me. You did not respond.
Councillor Johnston.
And Madam Chairman, not only did you just not respond at all, you are now demonstrating your complete bias by saying that opposition councillors cannot use a word while the Lord Mayor can. So, Madam Chairman, why is it the Lord Mayor can use the word liar, but a Labour councillor cannot?
I don't uphold your point of order, but Lord Mayor, I know that councillor Collier used that word several times and made accusations, but I'd ask you to try to use another word, please. Thank you, even though you are repeating.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was quite clearly, I was not calling anyone that word. I was saying, I hope that councillor Collier is not calling a council officer that word, which would be inappropriate.
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Madam Chairman, the Lord Mayor is now defying your ruling.
He has not, thank you councillor Johnston.
He is inferring completely that that's what councillor Collier has done.
I do not uphold your point of order.
And that is inappropriate conduct under the meeting's local law.
I do not uphold your point of order and the Lord Mayor is not using that word and trying to answer the question. Councillor Collier, I have warned you three times. Lord Mayor.
So we believe that it is absolutely appropriate to take safety seriously for the residents of Brisbane, for the people who are in the unfortunate situation of living in tents. And we want them in homes. And that's what our aim has always been, to work, to get them in homes, to support them. Whereas you see Labour and the Greens quite happy to say, no problems here, just leave them alone, just ignore it, just turn a blind eye, you know, ignore the violence reports, ignore the danger requests from local residents, the hundreds of requests we've had from residents and businesses. And so we will always step up and do what needs to be done. And we believe that safety should be a priority and everyone is entitled to safety. When it comes to first five forever, a state government programme, which the state government reduced funding for, which we picked up the bill for, for many, many years, and as I said, we can no longer afford to pick up the bill for state reductions in funding with so much cost shifting that's occurred over so many years. When it comes to Metro, we were very clear there would be a four-week trial and a preview.
Your time has expired.
We said that on day one.
Look, thank you. Further questions? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, we've just heard about some of the significant achievements that the Shrinak Council has delivered to keep Brisbane moving. It has also been a very big year in the infrastructure portfolio. Can you please update the chamber on what the Shrinak Council has delivered in 2024 and what Brisbane residents can look forward to the most in 2025?
Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And can I thank councillor Toomey for the question and for his ongoing interest in ensuring that we keep Brisbane moving. And this last year saw not only this council keep its commitment to keep Brisbane moving, but the people of Brisbane overwhelmingly endorse that ambition. And where is the people to deliver that ambition? How do we, how do we do that? How do we keep Brisbane moving in the infrastructure portfolio? Well, I'll begin by recognising, by recognising the question of councillor Toomey and identifying that the principal route for his community, that being Waterworks Road, has been reviewed and there will be a public consultation that's either launched or very close to launching to talk about the operational improvements of Musgrave Road and Waterworks Road to make people in that community move around more efficiently, particularly in peak times, but to get more people, more places, more often, the way they want to move. Now, I, I look at you, Madam Chair, and I note that one of the big projects of this year that would be, that would be a ribbon-cutting butt for the deeply unseasonal November rain on Beams Road 1A, which has been significantly, more than 90% complete, and it is interfacing well with the state government's works, that is the four-laning of that road that carries more than 25,000 people a day, the construction of an active cycleway with that. But also I can reassure both you, your community and all councillors that that project will be moving into Beams Road 1B as we've opened the EOI. So what have we enjoyed this year? The significant works of Beams Road to the west of the train line. What to look forward to next year? Significant works east of the train line as we continue to move through the Beams Road corridor. I see councillor Adaman and I recognise, and councillor Wolf, and I recognise their community's sincere interest in the removal of the Intrapilly Roundabout and its replacement with an overpass and through, overbridge and through lanes, which will significantly improve the throughput of that intersection. It will reduce the potentially dangerous interactions that were occurring at that roundabout. And not only with no roundabout, there will be clean and clear driving through that intersection, particularly in an east-west movement. That intersection carries more than 50,000 vehicles per day and all directions will be, will see material improvements in the efficiency of that particular community, as we know. But for the unseasonable rain this November, that project will be finalised in the early months of next year, as we said, as was, that was advice to the council last week. However, that has, that has not been the only thing we've done in the Mogul Road area this last year. As you know, it is a corridor programme. We have delivered a number of upgrades. Off the top of my head, there was a congestion busting project delivered near Intrapilly State School. There's also in earlier years, of course, delivery of the upgrade of the lights near the large ironwork, artwork near BBC and West's Bulldogs fields. Now, we have also launched the Restoration Programme and Plan and Committee for the Story Bridge. And I can reassure councillors that that committee has been announced and has, has met on a number of occasions and will provide, will be providing a public report in the near future. Can I thank those gentlemen who have joined that committee for their work, both what they have done, but also the important work going into the future? Now, I think it's also important while we sit here and talk about the future of the Story Bridge, to reflect on the significant works that have already occurred on the Story Bridge, with significant restorations work having occurred on spans one through seven and work is ongoing at the moment as we finalise the work on span seven. These are the spans over river and will be moving into our restoration programme into the future, planning and expected with cooperation from other levels of government. Also, returning to the western suburbs, this, this year we saw the delivery of the much-needed and well-executed maintenance works on the Wall to Taylor Bridge. The grinding of the, the grinding back to the bridge deck, the replacement of the epoxy, the replacement of the surface and the re-tensioning of the ropes and joints and joists was a key project for that community to ensure that we can use that much, that much-in-demand bridge. And as the Lord Mayor identified earlier, it was awarded the council's Get It Done Award and a well-deserved, a well-deserved recognition that was, bringing that project in five days ahead of schedule and being able to get that part of Brisbane moving.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Griffiths.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, Rockleigh residents and business are once again stressed and upset by major flooding of Stable Swamp Creek. A $100,000 council report has recommended desilting, removing of weed, trees, rubbish and debris from this clogged, clogged one kilometre of creek. Now here's the report. Given half the creek is owned by council and half by the state, will you ring the Premier and sort out this flood problem once and for all so that we can get this creek fixed? Yes or no?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question councillor Griffiths. I am aware that the location that you are talking about is one of the most flood-prone parts of the city and low-lying parts of the city, one of the first areas to flood. This is not because of Labour, it's not because of LMP, it is because of geography. And the suggestion that somehow some work along the creek will magically make flooding go away is not realistic. And I certainly hope that you are not trying to give residents the hope that a bit of cleaning out will magically make flooding go away, because it won't. It won't. Now, there are always some improvements that can be made and we've long had a commitment to do work on the land and section that we control. The sticking point has always been the state government. Now, I know that for most of the last decade, we have had a Labour state government. And we know that this problem has arisen because the former Labour state government did not want to do their part with the section of creek that they controlled. And I don't remember councillor Griffiths being, being very active at that point in time in the way that he is suddenly now. Some would sense that there's some politics at play here, but the reality is, if we can get the state government to do the work on their side of the creek, then that would be a good outcome. Our commitment remains that we're prepared to roll up the sleeves and do what needs to be done when it comes to our section. And we'll continue working.
Sorry, Lord Mayor, one moment. Councillor Griffiths, point of order.
The question was an appeal to the Lord Mayor to actually speak to the Premier and get this issue resolved, yes or no?
Thank you councillor Griffiths. The Lord Mayor is coming around to, in answering his question. And I ask councillors to remain quiet while the Lord Mayor is answering. Lord Mayor.
Well, of course, we want to see some work done, which is why we've made the commitment to do this work and will continue to try and get the state government to do work in this location as well. Those efforts are ongoing. It's not as though we haven't actually asked, it's not as though we haven't been consistent in our position on this. The person who has been inconsistent is councillor Griffiths, who did not want to take the fight up to the Labour government in the past, but now is suddenly red hot on this issue. But I would stress again that even if work is done, it will not eliminate flooding. It will not. It may make a minor difference, it may help some water get away slightly quicker, but it will not solve flooding in that area. It is a very flood-prone and low-lying area and it always has been. And as I said, this is not about Labour or LMP, this is simply about making sure that different levels of government can work together where work is needed to be done and we will consistently pursue state government to make sure that they hold up their end of the bargain. And as I, as I said, our position remains unchanged on that.
Further questions? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Communities in the Arts Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, can you please update the chamber on what we have done in 2024 to make Brisbane's lifestyle even better and what Brisbane residents can look forward to in 2025?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. And through you, thank you to my wonderful Deputy Chair councillor Atwood for the question. And what a year it's been for the community and the arts portfolio. The Community and Lifestyle Division is what makes Brisbane the lifestyle capital of Australia. In 2024, council has continued to deliver thousands of free and affordable events and festivals right across Brisbane. Some of our signature programmes, such as BrizAsia Festival, Valley Fiesta and the Lord Mayor City Hall concerts, have continued to grow in popularity after yet another fabulous year. Council also plays an important role in supporting a wide range of external festivals and events. Our incredible offices have worked closely with organisers of citywide festivals such as Brisbane Festival, the Brisbane Writers' Festival and the ever-growing Winham Fringe. A highlight for me personally was marching with River City Pride on Pride Day, as always, an amazing experience, and I thank River City Pride for their ongoing work. Here at council, we're proud to deliver and support local community events for all to enjoy. The events aren't over yet, Madam Chair, in fact, the best is still to come. It wouldn't be Christmas in Brisbane without the Lord Mayor's Christmas carols and this year's event will be the most festive one yet. With tickets selling out in under an hour, people are welcome to register for the Victoria Park Barambin Live site and join in on the Fest of Joy. Following its huge popularity last year, the Shrinak Council's $2 summer dips is back to keep families cool this summer at an affordable cost. More than 660,000 pool trips were made during the highly successful 2023/24 inaugural programme, which saved residents around $2.4 million in just three months. A trip to one of our council pools is a great way to entertain the kids, cool off or stay active. We know how much residents love this initiative and it's just one of the things that makes Brisbane's lifestyle even better. In May, council hosted our signature Homeless Connect event. The important event provides a range of free services to some of our most vulnerable residents. This includes things such as access to medical and allied health, professionals, haircuts, immunisation services, housing support, personal hygiene items and clothing. We had over 4,000 visits to service providers on the day and over 400 health consultations delivered to attendees. With over 800 people taking part, this incredible event is so important to some of our most vulnerable residents and I thank all the incredible council officers and volunteers that helped make the day such a success. There is one thing I must remark on when discussing our work to address homelessness in our community, Madam Chair, and that is of course the role of our PSLOs. I know it's been a hu- huge year for our PSLOs and they face multiple challenges, not just the demanding nature of their job, but also the unfortunate politicisation by those opposite. Despite this, they've had over 2,450 engagements with people experiencing or at risk of homelessness. The impact they have in helping people get out of parks and get a proper roof over their head cannot be understated. Now, here at Brisbane City Council, we have the largest library network in Australia, with 33 libraries, a mobile library and a pop-up library and a city archives. Council spends significantly more than our closest comparable library network and residents continue to demonstrate that it's money well-spent. I'm excited to announce that our total library visits for 2024 is projected to be around 5.6 million, which is a notable increase from last year. Our BNE Libraries app continues to soar in popularity.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
One moment, please councillor Howard. Point of order councillor Johnston. Point of order councillor Johnson.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I have a procedural issue I'd like to raise with you. On the 12th of November, in the minutes that are publicly available, you made the statement to the chamber that the word... The word that you cannot use with respect to lies is where you call someone a liar to their face. So, your ruling was, and I quote, "And it's when you are calling somebody a liar straight to their face." That is after councillor Adams and another councillor, I think councillor Cassidy had used the word lies. So, that's only three weeks ago, if that, that you made the ruling that the word liar was out of order, but today you've changed that to say now the word lies, which have been used by the following councillors in the last few weeks, the deputy mayor repeatedly, councillor Cassidy, councillor Murphy, councillor Wines, and councillor Griffiths. We're all okay. So, Madam Chairman, is the word lies, in your view, inappropriate in this house, in this place, sorry? Or is it, as you said on the 12th, that it is using the word liar?
councillor Johnson, I'll read out from what I have... I have my words here that I've previously spoken in the chamber, and I said, "I wish to advise the use of the word lie during debate in this place. I have now had the time to consider the ruling of previous Chair of Council that this word, in any form, is not to be used. I advise the chamber that this too will be my view going forward." councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Point of order, Madam Chair. Since then...
Point of order councillor Johnson.
Thank you. Since then, Madam Chairman, on repeated occasions, numerous councillors have used a version of that word, and you have not taken action against them, including the Lord Mayor and the deputy mayor. So, why is councillor Collier being singled out today?
councillor Johnson, I do not uphold your point of order, and I'm not going to debate it. I have said what I've said before, and I've pulled up councillors for using the word many times in the past, and I will not debate it. councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Another way the Shriner Council is making Brisbane's lifestyle even better is through our incredible grants programme. Whether your community organisation is an aspiring artist or an historical association, we have a grant programme for you. In 2024, the Shriner Council introduced the Lord Mayor's Safer Suburbs Grant. The new grant provides funding to support projects that strengthen security for our community clubs. The Safer Suburbs Grant was an election promise by the Lord Mayor in response to the rise of break-ins and thefts at our local clubs. The immense uptake we've seen in applications for this programme demonstrates just how necessary it is, with successful applicants being announced imminently. Madam Chair, it's been a huge year for the community and the arts portfolio, and I'd like to thank all the council staff that made it such a success. Our team is excited to continue to make Brisbane's lifestyle even better.
And that now ends question time. Lord Mayor, Establishment, point of order councillor Cassidy.
Just seeking on a procedural matter, Chair, question time ran for 53 minutes today. Last week, it ran for 43... Forty-three minutes, two minutes short of the 45 minutes, and your ruling then was that it couldn't exceed 45 minutes?
councillor Cassidy, thank you, but it's 43 minutes that it has run for?
So, what's changed this week, Chair, is that in previous weeks, including last week and the week before, you didn't stop the clock during divisions, but this week you have. Yes, that's correct. If you look at the time stamp, that is correct. So, is this a change in practice?
Thank you councillor, but the clock continued. And if you want to have a look at every week that we've had, seven questions, I think it is. Thank you councillor Cassidy. I don't... I do not uphold your point of order.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
I move that you be removed from the chair.
Seconded.
A motion that the Chair leave the chair has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no?
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division. Division has been called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Oyes to my right and noes to my left. councillor Johnson. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and 18 against.
Motion is lost. Councillors, resume your seats. Councillors?
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Point of order councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I know councillor Wines is an exceptional human being, but he does not have the ability to log into a laptop while it's closed.
Councillor Toomey, that's not a valid point of order. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the 25th of November 2024.
Madam Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 25th of November 2024 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 25th of November 2024 be adopted.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
Could I ask that all items be taken seriadum for debate and voting purposes, please?
Okay. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Look, one moment.
Okay.
Look, Lord Mayor, yeah.
Thank you.
Clause.
Now, Labour councillors and councillor Collier in particular, obviously on instruction from the leader of the opposition, was trying very hard to throw a lot of mud around before, but I did want to place on the record some important information.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Collier, do not call out while other councillors are on their feet, and I've told you endless times, and I will formally warn you shortly. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I did want to particularly place on the record the first inaccurate and false claim that councillor Collier made in particular, because it is quite offensive, and it's quite offensive to council officers. Now, the claim was made that somehow it was made up that there were fires in the park, in Musgrave Park, and that QFES has asked us...
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order councillor.
I claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim. Lord Mayor.
And that QFES has asked us to deal with the situation and switch back on the electric barbecues. You know, you remember the electric barbecues were being repeatedly damaged and vandalised, hot-wired, broken into, to get illegal access to power in an unsafe manner. And so, the barbecues were switched off for safety reasons. We then saw some claims on social media about fires in Musgrave Park. Now, I'm going to read a message chain that was within the council system from an officer in our corporate security unit. And this officer is engaged from the point of the safety of council officers and staff and members of the public in a public park, which is hence their interest there. This officer is also from the unit responsible for installing the CCTV cameras that we installed, and so this is why it is relevant and why they were involved. Let me read this out, message from the officer. Apparently, there is a Facebook post about fires last night, but we can't substantiate. We'll look into it and let you know if we see anything. So, first order of business was to check the CCTV footage. They couldn't find something from the CCTV footage.
Point of order councillor Johnson.
Madam Chairman, given the Lord Mayor released a commercial in confidence document last week, can we be sure that this is not an official communication, as is all default correspondence at council, which, as I know, is also confidential to council? So, does the Lord Mayor have permission to read this information out?
Thank you councillor Johnson. It's up to the councillors to decide whether they have the right information and that they can say that. Lord Mayor.
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Point of order councillor Johnson.
Madam Chairman, under the meeting's local law in this place, you are the person who determines whether something is confidential or not, and I am bringing it to your attention, and I would ask that you follow the meeting's local law.
Councillor Johnson, it does... Unless it's in this report where it tells us that it is commercial in confidence, et cetera, I would not know that. Lord Mayor.
That's why I'm raising it.
This is not commercial in confidence, and isn't it interesting that councillor Johnston and opposition councillors can make big claims?
Sorry, Lord Mayor. councillor Johnston, your point of order.
Yes, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, I'm not claiming something is commercial in confidence, but correspondence between council officers is classified as official. Official means confidential, under the relevant council policy, and my question to you as the person responsible for confidentiality in the chamber is, have you assured yourself that the Lord Mayor is not breaching the confidentiality requirements?
I don't agree with you councillor Johnson. I do not uphold your point of order, and as I said, it's up to the Lord Mayor to know and to decide whether he can pass on that information.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Murphy.
Madam Chairman, councillor Johnson's made, I think, what now, seven points of order during this meeting, and I would ask that you consider these repeated, flagrant, pointless points of order an act of disorder in and amongst themselves, and that you make a ruling accordingly if they continue.
Thank you councillor Murphy, but I don't uphold that. I haven't made that ruling as of yet. Thank you, so...
Thank you. And we see this happen time and time again, where an outrageous and untrue claim has been made, and then we go and provide the evidence, and they're like, "Oh, you can't provide that evidence, that's secret, that's commercial in confidence, that's confidential." And so, we see councillor Johnston jumping up the Labor Defence Force every time to try and protect them from themselves. But the reality is, a claim has been made, it is not a true claim, and the facts need to be put on the table, which is exactly what I'm doing. So, back to my point, back to this correspondence. We'll start from the beginning again, because you've obviously been distracted multiple times. Apparently, there's a Facebook post about fires last night, but we can't substantiate. We will look into it and let you know if we see anything. The cameras were checked. They couldn't see anything based on the positioning of the cameras. Then, a follow-up message from the same officer. "I spoke with the QFES," Queensland Fire and Emergency Services, "who confirmed there were two tent fires last night near the Edmiston Road end of Musgrave Park. They were unable to determine the cause of the fires, but suspect a local source. Unfortunately, our CCTV cameras have no coverage of this particular area. QFES has requested we remove the gas bottles and barbecue and look to reinstate the electrical barbecue, as it is a lot safer from a fire point of view." And so, QFES has been in touch and talked to our corporate security team. They have asked us to remove the gas barbecues and bottles and reinstate the electric barbecues. Now, there's been a claim made that this never happened, and that an untruth was being told. That claim, to be clear, is against the council officer. Now, I know that they want to play politics, they were making that claim against me, but I actually trust the people that work in this organisation. And you know what? I didn't even need to see their message. When I get relayed the information that a member of our corporate security team has been contacted by the QFES and asked us to do something, I take that seriously. And my first response is, "Oh, is that officer lying to me? Is that officer telling the truth?" No, of course not. I trust the people that work in this organisation.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnson.
Madam Chair, you've just restated for everybody that you can't use any version of that word, and yet that's what the Lord Mayor has done in breach of your ruling.
Thank you councillor Johnson, and he corrected it himself, so I didn't have to say anything. Thank you. Lord Mayor.
Now, it's become very clear that there are many casualties in Labor's attempt to play politics, and today, council officers have become the casualty in many ways. They've become the casualty because Labor couldn't simply say thank you to the people that work in this organisation. They had to play grubby politics, they had to politicise a non-political motion. It's really quite sad.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim of misrepresentation. Lord Mayor.
It's really quite sad that they can't, for one part of the meeting, put aside politics at the beginning of the meeting in a motion of special appreciation. And it's also very sad that we now see, because of Labor's game-playings, what council officers have told my office, and thereby my extension, by extension me, is being questioned, the veracity of that claim is being questioned. Once again, it's an attack on the council officers of this organisation, and it's an attack at a time when we should be thanking them, not attacking them. And so, as I said earlier, we take requests from our own offices, whether they're PSLOs out in the parks, our corporate security unit, residents that live around Musgrave Park and use the park and walk through the park, local businesses, we take those requests seriously, and we've acted. And we've also responded as the situation evolves. And it's really quite disappointing the way that Labor has tried to use this issue for base political point scoring. And so, obviously, when it comes to Musgrave Park and the request to switch back on the barbecues, we were requested by the QFES to do that, and we did that. End of story. End of story. Now, moving on, as always do, I wanted to talk about the lighting up of assets across the city. On Monday last night, City Hall was lit up in red and green for Christmas. Also, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Radcliffe Place were lit up in blue, green and orange for Disability Action Week. Today, all of our assets will be lit up in blue, green and orange for the International Day of Persons with Disabilities, and obviously, it's a day of acknowledgement and awareness that we fully support and actively support. Wednesday and Thursday, the assets will be lit up in purple for, once again, for the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust Christmas Appeal, which is well underway. And then for the remainder of the week, back to red and green for Christmas. On the weekend, we had an important announcement about the start on a permanent basis of Metro Services, and it was great to have the support of the Christopher Lee government and the new Transport Minister Brent Mickleberg to make that announcement, because what the former government couldn't do was work with us to lock in a start date of permanent services. They were aware of the preview that we had put forward, they were supportive of the preview, but we weren't able to, before they went into caretaker period and then the election, lock in a date for the start of permanent services. That has now been done. That date... That date is the 28th of January, just as we've come through the Australia long weekend, and as things are starting to get busier again towards the end of January, and more people are coming back to the office, school's back, and then we're seeing people thinking about going back to university as well in that period. And so, just as things are getting busier, we're starting permanent metro services on the M2, which is between... Councillor Cassidy thinks it's funny. So, councillor Cassidy, the metro denier till the end, it's not going to happen. He says it's not going to happen.
Councillors, thank you. Councillor Cassidy, please don't call out.
Well, we look forward to jumping on board permanent metro services when they start on Tuesday, the 28th of January, between the Royal Brisbane Women's Hospital and UQ, which is currently one of the busiest, if not the busiest, public transport routes in Queensland.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Move for extension. Seconded. It's been moved for an extension by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor?
And then we will also see at that time as well, the introduction of some changes to school bus routes as well, and this is something that's been done in partnership with Translink for the start of the school year. In quarter two next year, we will see M1 introduced into the network, and the new bus network will also be introduced at that same point in time. And that will see the biggest boost to transport services that we have seen in a generation. 160,000 extra bus trips added into the network, together with permanent metro services on M1, which runs between the Eight Mile Plains Station and Roma Street.
Point of order, madam chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Madam Chairman, I refer you to the meeting's local law, section 37, initially 37.1C, which requires any matter before the meeting that is required to be kept confidential, and that is supported by 37.3, that states, "It shall be the duty of the chair to determine whether a document marked confidential contains any matters which falls into the definition of confidential in Schedule One." It's a mandatory provision under the meeting's local law, madam chair, that you make the decision about whether any other matter, in this case, the document the Lord Mayor is reading from, is in fact confidential. And under council policy, that includes documents marked official. So can you please advise why you don't believe it's your responsibility to oversight the issue of confidentiality in the chamber?
Councillor Johnson, as I stated, it wasn't marked confidential. It wasn't a document that's being tabled and marked confidential. It was... And official does not mean confidential. So I had made my ruling, and that is my role here, and I made the ruling. So I don't uphold your point of order. The mere fact, and even if the mere fact that a document was marked as confidential, it does not mean that it is automatically ruled out of order pursuant to section 1C. Lord Mayor?
Thank you, madam chair. The document was not marked as confidential, it was not marked as official, it was not marked as commercial in confidence either. And more than that, I didn't table the document, nor did I reveal the name of the officer. So councillor Johnson will go to great lengths to cover up the truth. She'll go to great lengths, including making multiple pointless interjections.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim. Lord Mayor?
Thank you, madam chair. So we'll see the introduction of M1 and the new bus network in quarter two next year. In quarter three, we will see the switch made between the Queen Street Bus Station and the Adelaide Street Tunnel, which tunneling has now been complete, and we move into the internal fit-out and the fire and life safety services and technology that needs to go into fitting out the tunnel. So that work is now underway. And this new tunnel will help really unlock the bottleneck when it comes to buses and public transport in the heart of the CBD. And so that will allow us then, not only to run metros and other bus services through the new tunnel, relieving pressure and capacity on Queen Street Bus Station, making the flow between Victoria Bridge and the King George Square or City Hall Station seamless, but also it would allow us to go to a higher frequency service. Now, we've always had the ambition to go to three-minute services. We're starting metro at five-minute services, but when the tunnel comes online and we can operate through the tunnel, we can then unlock that bottleneck and go to three-minute frequencies. There are no other frequencies like it anywhere in Queensland. No other transport service offers three-minute frequencies, and so this will be a game changer. Five minutes is a good frequency. Three minutes is even better, and it's truly turn up and go. And so that's the kind of frequency that people know, that even if they miss a metro, they don't have to worry, because there's another one shortly behind that will turn up, so they can jump on board. We'll also see, with the support of the other levels of government, hopefully, work progressing next year on the Rapid Business Case for potential metro expansion. We've been very clear, we want to have a look at expansion to the Brisbane Airport, expansion to the north side along the Gimpy Road Corridor, and expansion along the eastern corridor as well, out through Old Cleveland Road to Chandler and beyond to Kapalaba, and then finally, expansion potentially down to Springwood as that new busway is completed. So a very exciting time for public transport and metro, despite the few metro deniers that are still around, is happening, it's coming, and it won't stop. It won't stop. And so, once it starts on the 28th of January, it's a permanent service. Two-dollar summer dips is now in place, and we've already had a big couple of days of two-dollar dips. And once again, I want to commend the team that's helped us make that happen, to keep the costs down for families and people looking for things to do in the city over summer. Item A is the surplus property disposal of industrial land at Goodham Road, Willowong. And council is the owner of two parcels of land. These lots are zoned as general industry, not suitable for housing. Two parcels of land were impacted by the upgrade of Goodham Road and Berman Road intersection in 2019. One of the two existing lots has been reduced in size to accommodate the intersection upgrade. A closed road that is no longer required, thanks to the intersection upgrade, is being converted to freehold land. The road titling process is being finalised, and the proposed new lot boasts an area of 6,644 square metres. And as we promised, we've continued to do a programme of review of our land holdings across council to determine what is surplus to our needs, what can potentially be used for housing, or what is appropriate for other purposes. This is something being done at the state government level as well, and we're continuing to go through this process. And so we're recommending the sale of this surplus site with the proceeds going back into the council budget to help fund all of the great things that we're continuing to do across the city.
Councillor Collier, your point of misrepresentation. One moment, please. Can I just get these points of misrepresentation? Councillor Collier?
Thanks very much, Chair. In his speech, Lord Mayor said a lot of things, but he specifically said that I said that there weren't any fires. I said that the Queensland Fire Department told the Lord Mayor... Sorry, the Lord Mayor said that he knew that the Queensland Fire Department told him about dangerous, unauthorised fires, and that's not the case. And I tabled this document, which is a report from the ABC dated the 28th of November 2024, titled "Brisbane City Council Fails to Back Up Claims of Rising Violence Against Homeless", and I'll read a short excerpt.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Murphy.
Point of order, madam chair. At what point does this become a speech in its own right?
Yes, thank you, councillor Collier. It is just to say how you were misrepresented, not to go into a debate. Thank you.
I'm giving context to what I said.
No, councillor Collier.
Sorry, I just can't hear you over the calling out from the other side.
But if you would prefer to go further in general business about the issue, that is up to you.
I'll table the document for the LMP to read.
Thank you. I'll now call on councillor Cassidy, your point of misrepresentation.
Thanks very much, Chair. The Lord Mayor's disgusting misrepresentation was, he claimed that I apparently didn't say thank you at all during my speech on the motion earlier. There's six occasions that I just highlighted here where I said, "The Labour team, here's our council staff, we value them, we have their back and we fight for them. We thank you very much." Thank you. Thank you very much.
Point of order again. I mean, it's the same one.
So thank you very much for everything you do. So the Lord Mayor lied.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy, would you care to retract that last part?
I don't know. I'm not sure what the ruling will be after this, but the Lord Mayor did not tell the truth.
Councillor Johnson, your point of misrepresentation.
Yes, during his speech, the Lord Mayor said that I went to great lengths to cover up the truth. My issues in this chamber have simply been to outline the chair's mandatory requirement to determine whether documents are confidential or not.
Councillor Dixon?
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that the meeting adjourned for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour, say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The meeting will adjourn when all councillors have left the chamber.
Councillor Cassidy on item C. On item A.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, it's just on item A, the surplus property disposal. Now, what we have before us today, I'm a bit confused with what the Lord Mayor said about introducing this item and what it is before us today. The Lord Mayor said a lot in his incee introduction, on a lot of things, but not a lot on this one. But what I did hear him say is that the state government and council are going through a process to identify land for use for housing. The land, and I understand there's also some land that can be rezoned from industrial uses, or former industrial uses, to housing, but I'm not sure that that would be the intent of this site. I'm not overly familiar with it, but from talking with councillor Griffiths and councillor Kim, who are very familiar with this site down that way between their two wards, that might be a very interesting use to develop that specific site as an island amongst all this other industrial land as housing. So I'm not sure, the Lord Mayor may have misspoke, but regardless of that, it is currently zoned as industrial land. We can see that the plans attached to the incee item state that the land was acquired and its industrial zoning retained and acquired because of the upgrade of Goodrum Road and Berman Road, rather, intersection back in 2019, and is surplus. So we understand that's the process of which we've gone through in here over the last month or so, and the disposal of a whole lot of residential land. So that will now be converted, this one, converted to freehold and available for disposal once that is created. It's an interesting one here in that noting very close by, the suburb of Polara particularly is rapidly growing. You see on the map that council provided in the papers here today, the rapid expansion of that suburb. I think I've heard councillor Kim say, if you go back five years, there was 500, a couple of hundred people living there, and now there's 3,000, I think, growing probably more than that in that pocket of Polara particularly. And there's a whole lot of infrastructure needs there. Obviously, there was a road upgrade ahead of some of that, that this land is now being disposed of as surplus to that. But there's a lot of needs inside that suburb there that council has been lacking in terms of investment out there. So we think there is potentially a great opportunity here in the sale and disposal of this land for funding vital infrastructure upgrades in the local community. We don't want to see, we know in reality what the LMP will want to do. They'll want to sell this land for a confidential amount of money. We can't talk about what the market value is of this, because it's been marked as commercial in confidence by the LMP. But we know they want to sell this land to plug the massive black hole on the Metro Bus Project, on the Moghl Road Project at Indrapilly, on the Green Bridges Projects, the massive blowouts on that. In total, well in excess of a billion dollars of blowouts and massive delays on those inner-city projects. So we heard from the Lord Mayor, the second thing he said about this is that it is the LMP's intention to sell this land and return that money to consolidated revenue, so it can go back into paying for those blowouts, those external consultants, maybe all those marketing and comms firms that the Lord Mayor issued a contract for millions of dollars worth just a few weeks ago. So we don't want to see money generated from this local community taken away to fund fixing the bad mistakes of this LMP Lord Mayor and his inner-city projects. Council's obviously going through a process at the moment, at an officer level, of identifying land that is surplus to needs, and obviously, the first consideration we think should be around providing affordable housing and partnering with social housing providers where appropriate. Again, where I started with all this, I'm not sure that this is one of those sites. So it is an interesting sale, and what proceeds will come from that sale, given that this isn't intended, well, not from the papers anyway, to be a site for housing, like the Lord Mayor said in his opening statements. It's actually just a sale of land to generate an income to plug a massive black hole in the Lord Mayor's budget. Massive, massive black holes, as we will discuss in the items coming up here. So we would reiterate our calls for council to, instead of just identifying opportunities to sell land and make profits from that and return that to consolidated revenue to pay for massive cost overruns and cost blowouts on inner-city projects, actually look at this process through a lens of finding and building homes for people, rather than just using it as an exercise to generate an income for a regime that is getting more and more desperate by the day.
Further speakers? Councillor Kim?
Chair, I rise to speak on clause A in relation to the disposal of proposed lot 2275 and 285 Goodham Road in Willowong. It's unclear if the commercial in confidence amount received at the disposal of this land will be reinvested back into our suburbs. And that's what we see, that's what we on this side of the chamber want to see. I know residents want to see how this chamber is going to help them, and this clause means council takes action nearby while turning a blind eye to problems just further down the same road. There are many questions unanswered on our side here today, which we're about to talk about. And given this clause was produced with no consultation with myself, councillor Griffiths, and by extension, all of our residents in Willowong and Polara, and no report was produced in consultation with surrounding facilities such as UNIDUS and the Animal Welfare League, we're left with many unanswered questions. This disposal of land is at the border of the Maruka and Callumbar Ward, and it is deeply frustrating that while we are working with council offices remotely on a variety of improvements to this area, there is a lack of communication from the LMP chairs who are indicated to attend these ENC meetings with at least a heads-up verbally about how we could put our ideas together. That's all that we ask for, just a heads-up. The ENC minutes state 6,644 square metres will be the lot for sale, including the closure of a road that admitted it as being no longer required and will be converted to freehold. There are a few outstanding questions councillor Griffiths and my residents would like to have answered, including, how many motorists use this road currently? How will the residents of Willowong and Polara be informed of these changes through mail-out and with early notice? Will there be a closure at this intersection and for how long? Given the state of progress and activity that happens at this end of the industrial zone, an entryway to Polara and the lack of investment from this LMP council that is evident as you travel down Goodham Road, which then continues on to Ritchie Road, can residents expect further progress and upgrades from Brisbane City Council in this new financial year handed down by the Lord Mayor? I ask that the LMP council strongly consider the residents' requests to improve this road. If you're willing to sell of this land, why don't we consider improving the same road that motorists have been complaining to council for years about? There are legitimate concerns regarding a lack of active travel, including the 2026 split campus model. That means Polara State School parents will be picking and dropping off school students from one end of Ritchie Road to the other, which connects to Goodham Road, stated in this clause. To me, this commercial in confidence amount is what could significantly improve this area, the same area that I've been instructed to hold off for until developers pick up the tab and construct footpaths, despite the fact there are four estates that were developed years ago. The following amendment proposes a pledge that the LMP council can support residents in Polara and provide more to our area. If it's not through these... If it's not through these means, then there should be another. I move the following amendment to clause A, surplus property disposal of proposed lot two, two seven five and two eight five Goodham Road, Willawong. Insert new point nine, which reads that the proceeds obtained from the disposal of proposed lot two, two seven five and two eight five Goodham Road will be reinvested to local infrastructure, including upgrades on Ritchie Road, curb and channeling and footpaths. And that point nine and point 10 are renumbered point 10 and point 11. In attachment A, insert point, uh, point three at the bottom of the draft resolution, that the proceeds obtained from the disposal of proposed lot two, two seven five and two eight five Goodham Road will be reinvested to local infrastructure, including upgrades on Ritchie Road, curb and channeling and footpaths.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Kim and seconded by councillor Cassidy that the following, uh, amendment to clause A, surplus property disposal of proposed lot two, two seven five and two eight five Goodham Road, Willawong. Insert new point nine, which reads that the proceeds obtained from the disposal of proposed lot two, two seven five and two eight five Goodham Road will be reinvested to local infrastructure, including upgrades to Ri, on Ritchie Road, curb and channeling and footpaths. Point nine and 10 are numbered, uh, renumbered point 10 and 11. And in attachment A, insert, the, insert the third point three at the bottom of the draft resolution, that the proceeds obtained from the disposal of proposed lot two, two seven five and two eight five Goodham Road will be reinvested to local infrastructure, including upgrades on Ritchie Road, curb and channeling and footpaths. Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. On the condition the funds obtained at the disposal of these lots can be reinvested into upgrading Ritchie Road, then that's where our side of the chamber can be in support of the substance brought before us in this motion today. However, as mentioned previously, there are still many questions unanswered, and this amendment is quite self-explanatory. I also wanted to put on record, um, in relation to this amendment, that we have done our homework and done the best that we can with the resources that we have been provided with council. We've also used the Suburban Enhancement Fund on designs to include a traffic island in Ritchie Road and another design to connect a missing footpath link along Ritchie Road. Recently, we upgraded a footpath for $40,000 in Parkinson, which is another suburb nearby. But I understand for any kind of construction remotely similar in Polara, it's going to cost significantly more and one that a suburban enhancement fund can't afford. So, this is why we've brought up this amendment today. This opportunity, this is an opportunity to help us in Polara. I sincerely hope we can work together with council and see some bigger funding. We're going to have the designs ready by next year, and I hope that the Lord Mayor can extend his capital budget via helping hand to residents in Polara who are deeply upset. We do understand the limitations due to our current economy. However, in a cost of living crisis like this, and as a new councillor, I hope progress can be achieved by taking a different approach. Uh, this really is a cry for help. I don't understand how else we can really continue developing these footpaths. I'm quite concerned, given that legitimately there will be two state campuses created on this road. Uh, Goodham Road, it connects to Ritchie Road. As you drive down, the street name just changes. Uh, so to me, it's quite interesting that this is happening. I would love a bit of a briefing from our council chairs or any kind of notice or more information about this one, hence why this amendment has been brought up today.
Further speakers. Councillor Griffiths.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to support this motion, having represented, uh, Polara before, but also, um, representing part of this area in terms of Willawong. Uh, I'm really shocked that this has come to the chamber without any briefing for myself or for councillor Kim. Um, it's, I'm shocked by it, but I'm not surprised. The administration is very biased in the way that they provide, um, provide briefings and provide information to elected members. I'm particularly disappointed, once again, in our executive team for not being, um, unbiased in the way they're providing information to our, um, to elected members of this chamber. What we have here is a request for one, for information, but we also have a request here for putting money back into the community. And Polara and Willawong, areas of high growth, high population growth, uh, many new people moving into the community, and they need support in terms of infrastructure. We keep seeing this oversupply of infrastructure in the inner city, another green bridge, another major road being done. Um, it's, it's a, it's a constant, um, gold, buckets of gold pouring into the inner city, and yet we see the suburbs miss out time and time again. And Polara is one of those areas that is missing out because, uh, of a real deficit of the provision of infrastructure, um, by council in this area. Uh, I believe that, um, this site is not suitable for housing, as seemed to have been indicated by the Lord Mayor. Uh, my understanding is that this, um, site is within, um, within the zone of ACE Waste, which is the burning of medical waste, uh, in Willawong. And ACE Waste, uh, there is a zone around that company that stops residential, uh, or childcare facilities being built, um, because of, uh, the nature of the waste being burnt there. So, my understanding is this land would be suitable for industrial aim. But I certainly support, uh, councillor, um, councillor Kim in, uh, in relation to, um, the provision of the funding from, from the sale of this land, uh, for directly dedicated for infrastructure and provision of infrastructure in Polara and Willawong. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I just rise to speak on the amendment, um, to, uh, item A, that's been proposed by councillor Kim. Um, week after week, and we don't hear it as much as we used to, but the Lord Mayor says, bring your ideas to the chamber. Now, that's something that I've done for many years, and I note that that's what councillor Kim is doing with this amendment as well. Um, she has put forward, um, a reasonable suggestion to see the proceeds of the sale of a section of land in an industrial area to be reinvested back into essential infrastructure, into a growing part of her community. Um, so this does strike me as a very good idea, um, because we know that if something does get built on this block of land down the track, those infrastructure charges won't necessarily go back into the local area. The Lord Mayor puts them into consolidated revenue, and that money funds projects in LNP wards. So, um, I just want to congratulate councillor Kim. I think it's a very sensible, um, amendment. I know the Lord Mayor will be right behind it because it's exactly the kind of, uh, local issue that he thinks this chamber should be debating, um, and I think it's a good one, and I'll support it.
Further speakers. Councillor Strunk.
Yes, I too want to rise and, uh, talk to the amendment that councillor Kim has put, uh, put forward. Um, she's a champion for, uh, Polara, and, uh, and she wants to see, uh, infrastructure go ahead in that suburb. It has been neglected for many years, right? Um, by the former councillor for Calumvale. Um, but, um, and, and I know that the infrastructure is much needed there. You only have to look at Ritchie Road, which she, she, uh, she talked about Ritchie Road a little bit, uh, but it's not all about Ritchie Road, uh, where this money could be, uh, could be well spent. Uh, Ritchie Road, of course, uh, deserves some better bus stops because we only had, you only had basic ones, uh, installed by the former councillor, um, and there was no sit-down, there was no shelters, there were nothing. Anyways, uh, and of course, that curb and channeling would do so well along Ritchie Road. Um, it's probably one of the more neglected roads, uh, in, 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 right across Brisbane, actually, and I was actually shocked that it was so close to a school, right? Uh, so this, this amendment, I think, goes a long way to try to address the shortfall in funding for Polara that has been experienced for many, many years. And I know when councillor Griffiths, uh, was, uh, the councillor for this area, uh, he, he was, he was asking for this type of support, uh, and, and it just didn't come. And then when the, then when you lost it on a redistribution, um, a, a, a few things sort of happened, but not a lot, right? And it was all about the school, which was important. Uh, but there is so much more that needs to be done, and I just commend councillor Kim for bringing this, uh, this amendment to the, uh, to the, to the chamber to, uh, and, and I hope that councillors on all sides of this chamber, uh, support this, uh, this amendment because I think it is well thought out, uh, and, uh, and I think it's very much needed. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers. Councillor Cassidy.
Um, thanks very much, Chair. This is extraordinary, the LNP can't go off script and can't think on their feet. Uh, you would think councillor Wines would get up and, so he would know the area, knows the issues that councillor Kim has been raising and the community has for a long period of time. So that, yeah, that, haven't had the, the, the pre-prepared notes, and I get, you know, sometimes you have to have them. Uh, but, uh, this, this is not something that's new. This is not something that's new. This is something that, um, councillor Kim has been talking about since, uh, she was elected and for a long time before that. Uh, this is something that I spoke about in the council chamber when, uh, councillor Kim was the Labor candidate out there and the LNP councillor at the time, Angela Owen did nothing about. So, so the chamber knows full well the parlous state of Ritchie Road and, and surrounding streets there. We all remember those photos of that poor woman who was having to put her children into Ubers and taxis to get them to and from school because there were no bus stops there, but then had to wade through puddles because there was no curbing and channeling to get to the road's edge to get to the Uber or the taxi. So, so this chamber is very well aware of the issues out there in Ritchie Road. I remember going to a public meeting out there, councillor Kim was there and councillor Strunk a few years ago to talk to residents about that, about their dissatisfaction with the LNP in that part of the world. And this is a very sensible solution, um, to it. Um, there is, we could probably assume millions of dollars going to, um, be generated from the sale of this land. Um, and the kinds of upgrades that councillor Kim's talked about are the bread and butter of council. Uh, it is, it is, yeah, well, yeah, I mean, they can't, they can't, they can't get fixing the Sturridge Bridge right. Um, maybe they could get putting some curbing and channeling in, uh, and some safe crossing points and some footpaths down a, a, a major local road in this community. Um, so we certainly hope from, from the LNP silence on this, that they will be supporting, uh, councillor Kim's, uh, great amendment to this here. It's pretty, it's very straightforward, very simple, um, but sends a very powerful message to that community that they've got a, a real champion in council here, fighting for them, um, consistently and not just towing, not just towing, uh, the civic cabinet line, uh, not just towing the instruction that they're given from up high, uh, like LNP councillors are unfortunately in this place. So, I look forward to us all, uh, joining together and supporting this amendment today.
Further speakers. Councillor Kim, right of reply.
Thank you, Chair. I suppose they, I'd like to thank all the councillors for their contribution today. Uh, but if there is one thing that I'd just like to end this with is regardless of how the council will vote on this matter, one thing that councillor Griffiths and I are very keen to look forward to is just a legitimate briefing about what's going to go on with this project if you decide to proceed with it. I think it's really poor form to not provide us with any kind of briefing. It's a reflection on how this council treats residents in Polara and Willawong. It's all that we ask for at bare minimum, and I think, given, given the amount of work that we're doing in these areas, the fact that we care about our residents and we want to be able to keep them posted about what happens in these chambers, I, I think this is incredibly poor form that we're getting blindfolded, uh, blindsided by, by a simple motion that comes up, uh, just, just a couple of days prior, and that's all we know about it as local councillors. Personally, I don't think that's good enough. Um, if anything, I am so relieved that there has been a change of a councillor in this area, given I can only imagine that these things would just all of a sudden happen in the area, and none of us as local residents would have any clue what's going on, let alone be told. Um, and I think it's time that things change. I'd love to see a collaborative approach. I've brought this up today because I think it should be put on the record that we had no prior knowledge about this. It would be great to get a bit more communication going, and if, if we don't get any, if we get, and don't get any more notice, I suppose the next step is to ramp up the community pressure, to get all the local residents to contact the Chair, contact the council, to ask for more. We've tried every other platform. If there's any other avenues that we can try, please let us know, and we'll give that a go as well. But otherwise, we're going to keep trying, keep bringing this up like the Lord Mayor instructed us to do when I first got elected in. Thank you.
Now, put the motion to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
The motion is lost. Division is called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Councillors, ayes to my right and noes to my left.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being six in favour, 18 against, and two abstentions.
Motion is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item A, which seeks council approval for the disposal of proposed lot two, 275 and 285 Goodham Road, Willawong. Madam Chair, there's no conspiracy here, theory here, um, despite what members of the opposition might think. Just like all levels of government, council has a rolling programme to review the land that we own, to ensure our continued ownership is in the best interests of residents and our ratepayers. You see, by carefully managing the land that we own, we're striking a balance, ensuring we don't add unnecessary costs onto residents, particularly during a cost of living crisis. Now, council owns two parcels of land at this location that were impacted by the intersection upgrade in 2019.
One moment, please, councillor Cunningham. Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
I claim to be misrepresented.
I know you, I didn't think you were mentioned, no. Your name.
Opposition councillors, I suppose, on it. Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Uh, councillor Cunningham said, opposition councillors who spoke, I was one of those, and said that I was talking about conspiracy theories. I claim to be misrepresented.
Councillor Cunningham.
Anyway, Madam Chair, uh, the parcels of land are classified as industry, just to be clear. Following the completion of the intersection upgrade, one of the parcels has been reduced in size to accommodate a new road. Another road connection was closed as part of the intersection upgrade and is now being reclassified as freehold land. The road titling process is underway, which takes some time, and this will create a new lot by consolidating the closed road with the two existing council lots. So, the total area, Madam Chair, is a proposed new lot of 6,644 square metres. I can confirm that any proceeds from the sale of surplus land does go back into funding future projects, Madam Chair. And I'd also just like to point out at this point, uh, in response to comments from, uh, councillors from the opposition, the opposition, 89% of funding in the Lord Mayor's 2425 budget is invested into our suburbs. And we look forward to considering any needs for upgrades in this area through the budget process, which is the appropriate way to consider any requests, and I commend this item to the chamber.
Further speakers. Councillor Cassidy, your misrepresentation.
Um, thank you very much, Chair. Uh, councillor Cunningham claimed that, uh, me or councillor Kim, uh, said there was a conspiracy theory around, um, the sale of this land.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy. I mean councillor Wines.
Um, I don't recall, I thought you denied councillor Cassidy.
No, councillor Wines, no, I'm, I'm allowing it.
Yeah, I just appreciate that. We do understand you can't, you don't have to accept more. All right.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy.
Um, thank you, Chair. Uh, what I said was, I was confused because the Lord Mayor said this land was for housing, but the papers before us today said it was owned industrial, it was being sold for... Yeah, the Lord Mayor said the state government and council are going through a process to identify land for housing. Uh, that's what the Lord Mayor said. The paper said something very different.
Um, Lord Mayor, you'll have a right of reply in a moment. Councillor Cassidy, finish. Councillor Johnston.
Uh, yes, just briefly on, uh, item A, um, I just think that councillor Cunningham's response, uh, on this issue, she didn't speak to the amendment itself. this issue, she didn't speak to the amendment itself, but then stood up and spoke on the, on the item. It was made very clear through what she said and what she did not say, that there is no intention that this funding will be reinvested back into the local community. So there is no commitment to do that. And it is disappointing to hear councillor Cunningham say what is often said by the LNP, that they are investing money into the suburbs. We know they are doing that, but it's all in LNP areas. So I think it is just a poor reflection on the finance chair that she was unable to recognise a good initiative as proposed by councillor Kim and just plans, plans to undertake the same old business as usual type operation, which is simply pork-barreling in LNP areas at the expense of other parts of Brisbane that are neglected, like my ward or councillor Kim's ward or councillor Griffith's ward and others.
Further speakers. Councillor Strunk.
Yes, I rise to speak on the, on the clause A. And I was interested, when this came into the, into the papers, I sat down with my ward advisor, we just had a look at this block of land. And it's a fairly sizable block of land. It's like, you know, one and a half acres, you know. And it's quite a valuable piece of land too, I believe. And I think that whatever, whatever the, whatever we are able to achieve from, from the sale, right, is, is something that would be quite substantial. Now, if we have a look at this block going back to, and with near maps you can go back to 2009, so it's always interesting to have a look at how a, a block has transformed over the last, well, almost fifteen years. And up until about two or three years ago, maybe two years ago, it was a fairly, there was a substantial biodiversity overlay of this, of this block. And, and when the upgrade of the intersection happened, right, that, that biodiversity just disappeared.
Yep.
It just evaporated. And so, and, and probably the excuse will say, oh, we had to do that because of the intersection upgrade. Well, I don't see how that's, that's possible. But anyways, I don't think we conform to even our own Knowles.
We don't.
We don't. We don't. We just, we just, it's, it's there to be used as a tool when you want to use it. Certainly there wasn't any state government overlays that I could see. But anyways, there was council overlays on it. I mean, this, this block of land and which, which will achieve, I reckon quite a lot of, quite a lot of funding for this, for the council. You could use it for all sorts of different purposes, I suppose. It could even be a petrol station and a bus, you know, a truck stop. There's a lot of trucking that happens in and around, of course, as you can probably imagine. Also, you could, you could also make it into a, a light, a light industrial impact business, business, business units as well, which I have quite a number of those in, in Richlands, which are very successful. So, I mean, there's, there's plenty of room here to do all sorts of things with this particular block of land. And I'm sure whoever the owner, the new owner will be, will want to, obviously want to, want to, want to be able to develop it into something quite, quite substantial. It's, as I say, it's got really, there's a two roads, there's a two-road frontage and, and the road that they closed down, which runs along the back of the triangle, which has now been closed, it's still, it's still in existence. The road's still there. So it could be repurposed again for another road. So theoretically, you could have three roads right around the whole block for accessibility and any sort of things you wanted to do with it, you know. So I just think it was quite an interesting, quite an interesting look into what had happened, or what, what had happened with the block over the last fifteen years. And, and the, and the finance, finance chair of council says, well, we'll use that money on future projects. Well, can we believe that?
You don't believe that.
I mean, will we ever see it? Can we even find out where that money went? So I think it's a bit disingenuous to sort of say something like that, as much as they, they probably believe it. And, but I, I think, like, like councillor Cassidy said, that the money will probably be used to pay down the debt for, for the blowouts and, and everything else that's happened over the last two years, I suppose. And it's just sad that, that the, that the amendment that councillor Kim put forward is, is not going to be realised. And that money that's going to come from the sale of this really valuable piece of land won't be able to be used within, within the Polara ward, or the Polara suburb, which is very much needed. Thank you Chair.
Further speakers. No further speakers. Lord Mayor, write of reply.
Thank you. Just briefly, there seems to be a lot of conjecture about what I said, so I'll confirm what I said. Both the state government and the council, and in fact other councils, are looking at all our land holdings. This was an outcome of the housing task force that we were a part of in the previous government, to look at all of the land holdings that we have, to see if there's land that's suitable for housing. And as part of that scan, we found this block, but it's not suitable for housing and so for industry. And so, one of the reasons why we're disposing of this surplus land. So it's not suitable for housing, it is an industrial block. But the search originally happened as part of our scan for land for housing that we, that we might have. You will remember recently, we made a transfer of a house to Brisbane Housing Company as a result of that scan. And there's been some other blocks of land identified that can be released into the private market to provide opportunities for new housing. This, as I said, is an industrial site, so it's not suitable for housing.
Now put item A to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Cassidy. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eighteen in favour and eight against.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats.
Just briefly, the item B is the contracts and tendering report for November. And two particular ones, the, worth mentioning here are the new switchboard for the Garden City Bus Depot as a result of the need to replace some aging equipment, which has reached the end of its life. And also, micro-tunneling work for a stormwater project in New Farm Park to provide some additional drainage relief capacity to the southern end of New Farm. And so I commend this item to the chamber.
Further speakers. Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you Chair. The, the contracts and tendering report before us today is the sum total of all of the work that this LNP regime have done for the entire month of November. The entire month of November's work on, on the basics, on getting roads resurfaced, on, on, on drainage works, as we heard a little bit about just then, on all sorts of contracts to get playgrounds built, to get shade built around, playgrounds around Brisbane.
Contract everything out.
They contract everything out. So these reports give us an indication of the work ethic of the Lord Mayor and the chairs of council. And what do we have before us today in clause B? Just two contracts. Just two things. That's all, that's all this LNP regime could muster up the strength to deliver in the month of November here in Brisbane. Now we know, we, we know why, because when, when you look at the item that's coming up shortly, the next item, we get an understanding of the, the depth of the cuts to the basics out in the suburbs of Brisbane. Things that were announced just months ago, or even just weeks ago, are being cut in that item. So the contracts are the bread and butter work of council. When the Lord Mayor hands down his budget and has the, the attachment, that it's now called, or the addendum, which is a suburban works programme, all of those things then are carried out by council officers who go and engage external contractors to deliver those items. And that's what we see, the result of that work. The result of all of the funding that the Lord Mayor allocates. Now, it used to be, there used to be a reasonable amount of transparency because that was included in the budget. Those lists of works, the suburban works programme, was included in the budget and there was some level of accountability as to what was being delivered and what was not, as they were removed in quarterly reviews. There's no level of accountability and transparency when it comes to those items. So all we have to go on now is the work that council undertakes in contracts and tendering, month in, month out, to fund the works and to carry out the works that the Lord Mayor apparently funded. All of those apparent billions of dollars is spending out in the suburbs of Brisbane. When you look at this, when you look at the contracts that are here, one is for a switchboard for the Garden City Bus Depot, electrical components, a, a single switchboard for a bus depot. And the other one is some micro-tunneling for a stormwater drain at Elston Road in New Farm. Now, that's important work, as we have seen over the last weekend here in Brisbane. We've seen massive amounts of flooding from, from, you know, I get that there's been a couple of hundred, up to 300 mils of rain through the entire month of November. There was about 100 mils falling on Sunday and massive amounts of flooding in places in Brisbane that really didn't expect it and shouldn't have expected it. Even places like in Milton, where we saw backflow devices installed recently, and that has caused what looks like massive amounts of flooding because that fresh rainwater coming down from the sky isn't able to get away, isn't able to get away. But what is the response when all of these issues arise from the community? The massive amount of issues in drainage that were uncovered in the 2022 floods, and then a massive amount of rain in January this year, massive amount of rain over the weekend, and we're seeing places flood over and over again. Some micro-tunneling for stormwater at Elston Road in New Farm is all this regime could be bothered doing in the month of November. So it's great to see that level of investment that occur, but what we need to see is a whole lot more. There are countless number of drainage projects that have been announced, re-announced, cut, re-announced by this Lord Mayor. And what we have found out in the first quarter review that came last week or the week before, that there were just two drainage projects completed, just two.
Just two.
Just two. And I assume, well, maybe this, this will be, this will probably be the one that has completed this quarter. In the first quarter of this financial year, two drainage projects completed across Brisbane, and we suspect this will be the one that they managed to complete. And you did, you know, you get the Lord Mayor and councillor Cunningham stand up in here just moments ago, saying that they're spending all this money out in the suburbs, they're, they're, they're investing in hundreds, if not thousands of projects worth billions of dollars. Well, the numbers don't lie. Look at your own ENC report. I know they don't spend long in ENC. I think the last one was 25 minutes or something. There was no, plenty of catering, no general business, 25 minutes to discuss items, of which there was a few that came through, the latest minutes we've seen there. So obviously, LNP chairs are not across the detail. Maybe it's just the Lord Mayor's office is now, is now just instructing a tick and flick exercise. But the numbers don't lie in the contracts and tendering report that's before us today, that residents aren't getting good value for money out of this regime. They are paying more, whether it's through their rates, whether it's through a pension tax on their rates bill, whether it's through fees and charges being jacked up each and every year. We're seeing less, less and less being delivered in the suburbs of Brisbane. This is an absolute shambles of a council led by this Lord Mayor. We know that council officers work hard with what they've got, but can you imagine, I don't reckon any of these LNP chairs or the Lord Mayor would actually have the conversation with council officers who were instructed to start working on these projects that were ostensibly funded in the budget through the suburban works programme, and then weeks later cut, and then weeks later, more of them cut, and then weeks later, again, today in this, this mid-year review, more of those things cut. It must be pretty...
Demoralising.
Very demoralising to work in council at the moment when, as council officers, they're required to do more with less staff. And then when they start to, to get ahead of seam on some of those projects, the rug gets completely pulled from underneath them. And the Lord Mayor and these chairs have the gall to get up here and say they care about council staff and apparently care more about council staff than we do on this side of the chamber. Well, the evidence wouldn't suggest that. And these contracts today before us and other items we're going to debate don't suggest that either. The facts do not lie.
Further speakers. Councillor Wines.
Thanks Madam Chair. I rise to speak to the item before us today, the contracts and tendering, and to speak directly to the matter of the Aliston Road, New Farm Drainage Works. Now, I have to address some of the pieces of commentary made by councillor Cassidy directly. He has said that somehow, because there is only one item in this particular report, that the amount of drainage occurring in the city has somehow reduced. That is not correct. The vast majority of drainage projects delivered by the Brisbane City Council are delivered by in-house, full-time, permanent Brisbane City Council officers, right? So they, and right now, I can tell off the top of my head, we have projects active in the Ashgrove area and either still active or very near conclusion in the West End area. And they are both major works that are occurring at the moment. Now, the other reason that you don't see a lot of drainage works occur in wet season is because drains require it to be dry, because the drains themselves are a conveyance of stormwater. They, if you are in the, the working pit, doing up the drain, the drain is not, is typically not functional through the wet season. So we typically back-end or front-end our drainage works. So most of the drainage works that Brisbane City Council delivers will be April, May and June, because that is historically drier than other parts of the year. Now, you typically don't do a lot of drainage works in summer because you need the drains to work, right? And so sometimes that is lost, I think, the actual functional way that our drainage system works is lost on some councillors. And I appreciate that councillor Cassidy doesn't really understand the basics of a lot of what this council does. And he concludes that matters if that, that this council must only outsource its works. I assure he and all other councillors that that is not the case. For example, as I said, underway, Fraser's Road, Ashgrove, Naru Street and Devon Hill Street, the gap, Mornington Street, Red Hill, Drury Street, West End. And then there are also this year, had that have been delivered, Oxley Terrace, Corinda, Blandford Street, Grange and Smith Lane, Upper Brookfield. So I hear councillor Johnson interjecting, I assume it's in support because it was to the benefit, it was a community project to the benefit of her residents. And as we heard earlier, she claims that never happens, but I can think of three this financial year that have been delivered for her community in spite of her protestations. So that is but one example, one more example of that. Now, the work we're doing in Aliston Street in particular requires micro-tunneling. However, a small portion of Aliston Street will be closed for that drainage work to occur. There will be detours in place when they will be advised to that community in, in good time. I believe that that has begun. Also, as part of this works, there will be some drainage works completed within New Farm Park. And there will be some areas within New Farm Park that will be used for stabilings and that there will be works concluded in that area, we are hoping in the early quarter, the first quarter of next year. Now, I just have to take a moment to remind councillors in the New Farm Park area, New Farm Park is the low area of the New Farm community and it draws a lot of the drainage into that area. So to get the water out of the households, the capacity into the park, which in some, on some days operates as a drainage basin, the water has to be conveyed into the basin. And so that's what this work speaks to. So as I said, this council, the vast, I'll say it again, I think it's important to say this so that people understand. The vast majority of drainage construction by the Brisbane City Council... The vast majority of drainage construction by the Brisbane City Council is delivered by permanent Brisbane City Council crews. Sometimes work is required, that is, that requires material or technical machinery that we don't possess, like micro tunneling. This contract speaks to our need to micro tunnel through that area to ensure that our effect on the local community is reduced and the work is done in an adequate and timely manner. Another point I feel I must say again, we don't typically do a lot of drainage work in the wet season because whatever drain we're working on is no longer conveying water through that drain. And often through wet season, we need it to. So we do the bulk of our drainage work in the dry season or in the fourth quarter of the financial year.
Further speakers, councillor Johnson.
Oh, sorry, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear you at all. Thank you. I rise to speak briefly on item B. I'll just start by saying, I've been a councillor here for 16 years, and I have never seen a contracts report come through with only two items in it. I am not surprised, to be honest, that this is what the LNP administration have fallen to, this new low of failing to deliver for the community. But this reflects what is going on out there in Brisbane. And the fact that there are only two projects being undertaken this month on anything, let's put aside this one, there's one on fixing a switchboard and the other one on a little bit of tunneling in New Farm Park. There are no projects on anything else that this council has entered into for the month of November. Now, there's plenty of things that are inside and dry that this council could do. And it's just shocking that this is a reflection of the LNP's work ethic. It is a reflection of their leadership. And the big problem here is that the Lord Mayor has a dodgy budget that has failed to invest the funding needed into projects in the city. So we know there were massive cuts last year, and his budget in June this year also made further cuts. And we can see that starting to flow through in the budget now because these projects that we presume are in there, like, you know, the CEO did eventually provide a list to most councillors of the projects in the budget. So we presume they're in there, but they're just not coming through to council in the, through the procurement process. So it is a little bit surprising that there are only two items on here. And I note the explanation given by the infrastructure chair that, you know, it needs, it's usually done in the fourth quarter and, yeah. It doesn't really explain why we get to the third and fourth quarter of the year and all the drainage projects from the previous year roll over to the next year. And thanks for raising Oxley Terrace, Oxley, because that's exactly what happened to that one. It was promised two years ago and they started it. And then it was supposed to be finished last year, so if that's still going in 2025...
Point of order claimed to be misrepresented.
I note your claim, councillor.
Yes, it wasn't this year's budget that that project was funded in. Yeah, it was last year. And if it's still going, that would be somewhat of a surprise to me. So I guess the really interesting thing is, and I look forward to further debates on this, that councillor Wines seems to think that these projects don't keep rolling over. So the problem is their inability to deliver them. That's fundamentally the problem, and that is reflected in the item before us today.
Councillor Wines, your point of misrepresentation.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. As I stated in my comments, it was very clear that whatever projects occur in Tennyson Ward, councillor Johnson will criticize and attack regardless of their merit, regardless of whether they are to the benefit of her community or not. As I said in my statements, there were three quality projects, all of which delivered in her...
As I said to the other councillors, point of misrepresentation, please make it brief. And to the point, what was your point of misrepresentation?
My point is that councillor Johnson attacks all projects delivered in her community at all times and finds fault with everything, regardless of the, to the benefit of her own community.
Thank you, councillor Wines. Further speakers, councillor Struck.
Thank you, Chair. Not interesting times in the chamber this afternoon. Anyways, I rise to speak on this, on this item clause B. And it's quite interesting, is it about, is it only having two contracts in here? Is it about what the leader of opposition said, or later councillor Cassidy said, about cuts to the budget and to projects because of that? Or is it about work ethic, as councillor Johnson said? Or is it just a strategy to delay bringing contracts into this chamber so that we can debate them? Because we're not going to sit until like February. That's a long way off. So you've got December, January, February, so it's like eight weeks away. So is it a strategy of doing that? We don't know. We don't know. But, and I agree with councillor Johnson in regards to, I've never seen two contracts only come into contracts and tendering. I've seen maybe minimum five, but I don't think I've ever seen anywhere near as low as this, you know, two. And of course, the two that are here are, of course, worthwhile projects, don't get us wrong. We're not saying anything along those lines. But the Lord Mayor has said, well, you know, a lot of this work that's done, was done by internal council officers in regards to drainage, drainage projects, right? Well, we don't really know that because we don't really get told of them. Now, the infrastructure chair has just listed about seven of them, right? Now, we don't know when they started, when they were proposed, when they were funded, how big the projects are. Are they very small projects that, as I say, can be undertaken by a council team, right? Or are they major projects that a number of teams have to undertake? And we don't know what the cost of those are, and we don't know where they are. We don't know if they're in my ward or Tennyson Ward or Maruka Ward. We don't know any of those unless, unless maybe, maybe there is some night work that's going to happen. And then we get notified of it, of course, so that we can let our residents know. But literally, you know, for, I mean, for all of November, this is the only two contracts, which is phenomenal in itself. And then we're not going to sit for another eight weeks. And by that time, the delegates will make all the decisions. It won't be, it won't be anyone, it won't be anyone in this chamber. It'll just be all noted that this is, this is what's transpired. And it's a fait accompli, right? So I just think it's really sad to sort of see this amount of work ethic, as councillor Johnson said. And maybe it is a very reflective of the fact that the budget cuts are really cutting into contracts and tendering. So that a lot of the projects that should go ahead, we just don't have the money anymore. It's been spent on, you know, raw gold projects that, yeah, you can make a case for, but you've got to do the basics, you know? We're in a, this, this, we're in a river city here. We've got, we've got to do more with the flood mitigation, right? Because I don't think it's going to be 10 years before the next one, God forbid, right? Because, you know, you don't want anyone to have to go through that. But we've got to do everything we possibly can to mitigate that flood over, flooding overland and through creeks and through the river as best we can for the, for the, for the resources that we have. But I just think it's, you know, it's really sad to only see one micro, micro project here. And I don't know what that project looks like. I don't know how big that, that micro drain is going to be, or pipe, or whatever. But anyways, and maybe it should have been able to be done by internal council officers, workers, you know? It's a micro, so maybe, maybe we should be doing it instead of contracting it out. It would probably be a lot cheaper and employ probably some good full-time staff as well. So, thank you, Chair. I'll finish my comments there.
Further speakers.
Yes.
Councillor Griffiths.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item B. And I'm a bit shocked by this report coming to the chamber, in the last meeting of 2024. I'm really disturbed by this report and disturbed by the argument I've heard today. It reflects the very little leadership that is shown in this chamber or by this LNP administration. And even less so for me, their lack of concern for residents, genuine concern for residents. I note here that Rockleigh is not getting anything. And we heard the Lord Mayor say today, well, Rockleigh floods. It's one of the lowest points in the city, and it floods. So people should expect to flood. Well, New Farm Park is being well looked after here, Lord Mayor, with this particular project. And I haven't seen one public meeting, you at one public meeting there. I haven't seen you do any media there. I haven't seen you speak or respond to residents there. But they're getting the attention. They're getting the attention, and Rockleigh is ignored. Rockleigh has the worst flooding in Brisbane. It has it continually. I've sent you messages, Lord Mayor, with pictures about Rockleigh.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Here we go.
Deputy Mayor.
Relevance to the report, this is a general business speech, not a contracts and tendering debate.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If you can come back to the actual report, please. Councillor Massey.
I am about to get to it, and we've heard about Upper Brookfield, we've heard about Red Hill, we've heard about the gap, heard about Ash Grove and heard about West End. So I'm talking about Rockleigh. And Rockleigh has missed out. Rockleigh has missed out. You know that residents have really suffered at Rockleigh.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Councillor Griffiths has just reiterated, Rockleigh is not in the report.
Yeah, it isn't in the report, and it should be in the report.
Councillor Griffiths, I do ask you to come back to the contracts and...
Up, up, Upper Brookfield isn't in the report.
I'm speaking.
Just saying, you haven't pulled them up.
While I'm speaking.
You haven't pulled them up?
Councillor, I warn you. It is not in this report, which is about contracts accepted by the delegates. So please come back to item B.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Madam Chairman, you allowed councillor Wines to speak about numerous areas, including Ash Grove, Red Hill, Oxley, the gap. And you did not rule West End not in the report, and you did not rule his speech out of order. So why are you applying a different standard to councillor Griffiths?
I don't uphold your point of order, councillor Johnson, councillor Griffiths.
Madam Chairman, I move dissent in your ruling. It just demonstrates bias.
I second that.
Dissent has been moved in my ruling by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Griffiths. Those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it.
I'll keep going with my, my speech. So residents across the city are missing out. And residents in the worst affected flood areas of the city are missing out under this LNP administration. And what do we know about full residents? With 20 years of LNP administration in the city, we know flooding has never been worse across the city. And we know that more people than ever have been, have been affected by flooding. And we know that this council has no plan for flooding, no plan for our waterways, despite repeated requests for this administration, this LNP administration to transparently list, let's list all the flood work, all the flood mitigation work that needs to be done so that residents, residents aren't impacted by flooding. But no, do we see that? No. What we see is time and time again, this biased, biased administration bringing through work that's benefiting their own wards, benefiting LNP wards, and not giving a crap about the residents in other areas of the city. Not worrying about them at all. Madam Chair, this is not good enough. This is bad for the city of Brisbane. This is bad for our residents. And I know my residents want to speak to you, Lord Mayor. But when they've tried to speak to you, been either in Egypt or Switzerland on some first-class junket and haven't been able to come and meet with them. And they are really annoyed and really upset that their homes flood, that their homes are affected by, their roads flood, their areas flood. They're very stressed with that, and this council has chosen to do nothing about it. This LNP administration has chosen to do nothing about it. And the blame sits squarely at your feet.
Councillor Griffiths, your time has expired. Further speakers. Lord Mayor, right of reply.
Well, now I've heard it all. I, I remember, it's not about you, councillor Griffiths. As much as you want to make it about you, it's not about you.
One moment, one moment, please, one moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Griffiths, I've asked you to stop calling out while another speaker is...
Come and meet the residents with me, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Griffiths, as you continue to fail to comply with the request to stop calling out across the chamber and speaking while I am speaking, you are showing unsuitable meeting conduct. So in accordance with section 21.8 of the meetings local law 2001, I hereby make an order reprimanding you for your conduct. Your conduct and this reprimand will be noted in the minutes of this meeting. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And now councillor Griffiths, it's really clear to me now that we're seeing a really cynical exercise being pursued here. One where councillor Griffiths seems to be promising that there's a simple fix to flooding in his area. And it's only if the, if the council would do this or that, then flooding would not be a problem. We know that that is false. And when we see...
Point of order, councillor Griffiths.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
I note your claim. Lord Mayor.
And when we see these types of claims and this type of politics being played, people rightly become cynical. Because it is an area where we've seen, for example, the federal government and the state government investing heavily in buying up houses throughout the Rockleigh area, throughout councillor Griffiths' area. Why? Because a drain won't fix it. Drainage works won't fix it. There's been an acknowledgement that the houses have to be moved from that area because they will continue to flood. And so the type of politics that councillor Griffiths is playing is cynical. And I would expect better from someone that represents an area where rather than trying to offer false hope and play political games, he should, he should actually be serious and upfront with the residents about what's achievable and what's not, about what certain projects will deliver and what's not. But I move back to the report here, and as I said, I thought I'd seen everything. But it's quite clear that there's a deliberate filibustering going on here from the Labor team. I've never seen them talk more on contracts and tendering. But you know what they usually say? They usually say, it's an outrage that the council is outsourcing so much work. And today, it's like, it's an outrage that we're outsourcing so little work. It is extraordinary, the way that they can backflip, cirque du soleil. Councillor Cassidy, you know, put your application in, through you, Madam Chair, to cirque du soleil. We have a new trapeze artist, the new backflip king. Because you come in here time and time again, month after month, saying, none of this work should be contracted out, council should be doing it in-house. And then this time, a complete reversal of position. Oh, not enough's been outsourced, not enough's been contracted out. You're not doing anything. And as councillor Wines pointed out, there's an incredible amount of work that's being done by council officers, by our teams internally. And council, council continues to provide the backbone of so much work that occurs across this city.
Stop calling out, councillor Cassidy.
Labor is saying that we're not contracting out enough work. In the month of November, Labor is saying, we haven't contracted out enough work. That's what's been going, that's what they've just wasted 40 minutes saying, where they all got up with their pre-prepared speeches designed to filibuster and waste time.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Just on relevance, I thought the Lord Mayor was summing up contracts and tendering. He seems very upset that councillors are exercising a democratic right to debate items. This is in fact the only forum we have.
Thank you.
I don't think we were contained in the report.
No, councillor Cassidy, the Lord Mayor has a right of reply, and he's doing that.
I just thought it was quite extraordinary because it was quite clear that in councillor Cassidy's pre-prepared speech, and I do believe that he practised in front of the mirror for that one. He really worked himself up. He went red, he got really angry, and he, you know, And he, you know, he believes he's a great orator and made a great contribution here.
Point of order, councillor Collier.
On relevance, descending into cheap personal insults is just absolutely ridiculous.
At least the coun, at least the, thank you. At least the Lord Mayor is the one on his feet and having, excuse me. Councillors, you both have the ability to have your say. And when you're on your feet, I call up other people if they interject, which is what you are doing. Councillor Collier, as you continue to fail to comply and speaking over the top of me when I am speaking, you are showing unsuitable meeting conduct. And in accordance with section 21.8 of the Meeting's local law 2001, I hereby make an order reprimanding you for your conduct. And your conduct and this reprimand will be noted in the minutes of this meeting. And I'll remind all councillors that when another councillor is on their feet, you are to remain quiet. You all have the opportunity to speak and you are allowed it. So do not call out and hurl abuse across the chamber.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Will you be reprimanding the Lord Mayor for abusing councillor Collier and screaming at her just now? And councillor Ayer and the deputy mayor?
I have just told all councillors, and you can check the minutes later, to stop talking and calling out across the chamber.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
I move dissent in your ruling.
I second that.
Dissent in my ruling by councillor Cassidy on his, um, what was it? And yeah, I'm, yeah, just against everything I say, basically against everything I say. And seconded by councillor Johnston, thank you. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it. Division by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Councillors, take your place. Councillors. Councillors. Councillor Johnston. Thank you, councillors. We do not need you bullying in the chamber, councillor Johnston. Please stop bullying and take that side. I don't think you're sorry. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being six in favour, 17 against and two abstentions.
And that motion is lost. Please resume your seat.
Excuse me. Point of order.
Councillor Griffiths.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a point of order in relation to the mayor's speech. I'd just like to correct. I just want to make it really clear that I've never said to residents that drainage work down in Rockleigh will totally solve the problem of flooding. Never, ever.
Thank you, councillor Griffiths, but I hadn't called for your misrep yet because the Lord Mayor hadn't actually finished. So that's okay, I know. It seemed a long time because of everything that was going on. Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, twice during that division, the deputy mayor approached you while you were in the chair, encouraging you to call for...
Point of order, Madam Chair, claim to be misrepresented.
Continue, councillor Johnston. Councillors.
Yes, that was councillor Adams loudly interjecting. When you say councillors, you've got to actually mention councillor Adams, you know. So Madam Chairman, twice during that division, councillor Adams approached you in this place while you were chairing the meeting and advised you that there should be a 15-minute adjournment. And Madam Chairman, that is inappropriate conduct to do that. It is completely improper for her to be suggesting what you do. You admonish others when they do it. It is absolutely wrong that she do that. And she has denied that she's done it twice now, Madam Chairman. So will you take action against the deputy mayor for her behaviour in the chamber?
It is, it is not a point of order and many people are having conversations in this chamber. So I don't uphold your point of order, misrepresentation, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll say it for a third time in the chamber so she can listen perfectly. I said, feel free to call on me for an adjournment, Madam Chair, for 15 minutes, if you'd like them to settle down.
We'll come back now to the Lord Mayor's right of reply.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chairman, I am concerned by your statements that you are regularly approached in the chamber with issues that are raised. I am concerned that people are instructing you outside of the ordinary point of order process as the Lord Deputy Mayor attempted to do. So Madam Chairman, can you...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Just one point of order at a time and we are listening to councillor Johnston's point of order.
So Madam Chairman, can you confirm that you are not being influenced in the chairing of this meeting by others outside of the formal process of raising a point of order?
Councillor Johnston, I am chairing the meeting, so I'm responsible for those decisions or what is what is going on. And I will pull people up if I feel I need to. So I don't uphold your point of order. We had a point of order from, uh, do we have one from the, okay, councillor Wines?
Thanks, Madam Chair, I just had a point of order. Relevant to discussion that has just been occurring about people approaching the chair. I witness councillor Johnston approached you twice in what I would call an unnecessarily hostile manner, one that I would view as unworthy of this place. And I seek consideration by you to reflect upon her conduct and her unnecessary aggression toward you at that time.
Thank you, councillor Wines. But as I just said to councillor Johnston, I will decide and make that decision myself. Lord Mayor, right of reply? Okay, we'll now put that to the vote. We'll now put item B to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Councillors, thank you. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 15 in favour and seven abstentions.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors, we'll now move to item C. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item C is the mid-year budget review. And we're working very carefully on an ongoing budget basis to manage the costs and expenditure in our budget to make sure we can keep the budget balanced, we can keep delivering the things that are essential for the people of Brisbane, not only to keep the city ticking along, but also the infrastructure that's required for the future. And we absolutely continue to do that on an ongoing basis. And so we heard earlier today commentary on the Labour parties or the Labour opposition's outrage that we were rightsizing the organisation by not necessarily filling a position when someone leaves the organisation, as though that was some kind of major problem. And so we made it very clear that there would be no forced redundancies and that the permanent employees of council can be aware that their role and their work with council is safe. And so we said we would look at consultancies and contractors, which we did. And by extension, it's also sensible and responsible that if we're going to change the size of the organisation to manage expenditure and keep the budget balanced, that we would do so in a measured and responsible manner. And rather than letting people go, that if someone leaves the organisation, we ask the question, well, what's the optimum size of that unit or this organisation going forward? And that's the type of thing we've been doing to make sure that in a measured, sensible and planned way, we've been able to reduce the expenditure of the organisation significantly. And we've also been able to make sure that council has a responsible headcount without, without seeing people out the door. And that is the right way to do things. And, and it's quite extraordinary that, that Labour thinks this is somehow outrageous or inappropriate. If someone leaves the organisation by their own choice, absolutely. Management should ask the question, okay, well, what's the optimum arrangement going forward? And how can we look at things to make sure we are keeping the budget balanced, delivering the services that are required? And this is just one example of how we've been managing costs and keeping the budget balanced. And so all of this is, all of this is, you know, contrary to what Labour councillors believe. All of this is what they campaigned against at the election when their vote went down to 26% across the city. But the reality is the people of Brisbane support responsible financial management. And that is exactly what we've been doing and we continue to do that. And the reality is that the pressures aren't magically gone now. There are still inflationary pressures. And we've been told, for example, that Australia cannot expect inflation to retain, to return to sustainable levels between 2 and 3% until 2026. So despite all the commitments and promises at the federal government level, inflation will not be down to its normal levels until 2026 is now the current prediction. And so that means we need to continue managing costs. We need to continue controlling expenditure to make sure we keep the budget balanced because there are still cost pressures on this organisation. And so these statements and the budget review that's coming through includes the continued massive investment that we're making in infrastructure of around $1 billion. It includes also some positive news as well. This budget review is the first financial statement that includes the additional funding that we were able to win in our negotiation with the state government for public transport. Now, historically, the state government has funded public transport in Brisbane 80%, with council putting in 20%. And over the years, state government has, I guess, squibbed their responsibility. And it's now closer to 60% state government funding, 40% council funding. So it went from 80/20 with state government paying 80, 20% council, to now around 60/40 with council putting in 40%. So we've effectively doubled our contribution to public transport. And so what's happened is this, we continue to invest at the higher level, but we've got the state to top up their investment. And so that's starting to flow through and that is a good thing because it means we can deliver improved services. We can roll out the metro and the new bus network. And that's starting to flow through in these budget statements as well. Last year, we were especially focused on making sensible savings. We were very upfront with people about the need to do that. And I say again, we need to continue to monitor this very closely while inflation is high and while there's pressures on inflation and the council budget. And we'll continue to do the responsible thing. The update also includes the recovery of some council costs from the Queensland Reconstruction Authority, or the QRA, in response to work that has been done since the 2022 floods. Now, sometimes this money is paid after we've done the work. And so we've been progressively following up to get, to get as much as we possibly can reimbursed through the Queensland Reconstruction Authority, acknowledging though, excuse me, that council was around $300 million plus out of pocket as a result of the 2022 flood. Overall, this budget update sees an increase in the net result for 2024/25 of $21.3 million. We'll continue to make sensible savings to help balance the budget and keep downward pressure on rates and rents. And we'll also, I also want to thank and pay tribute to councillor Cunningham and the finance team, the budget team, that have been continuing to work to make sure that we manage and control expenditure and expenses so we can keep the budget balanced. And so once again, our approach has been consistent. And in this budget review, we've maintained that financial discipline and we will do so going forward.
Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on clause C, the mid-year review, which is a new thing. It used to be a second quarter. It should be called a second quarter review. Now it's called a mid-year review. And it was interesting to listen to the Lord Mayor speak with a forked tongue just now when it comes to council workers. I was really proud to, just last week, stand with representatives from unions who represent thousands of council workers out the front of City Hall last week, discussing, discussing the disappointing, to say the least, that's a nice way of saying disappointing, offer, wage offer and redundancy offer that this LMP regime was making to council staff. We're raising concerns about reducing those redundancy payments. And we should be worried. We should have been worried then and we should be very worried now. Because the Lord Mayor said, and I quote, this is just now, how do we change the size of the organisation to reflect cost pressures when it comes to staff? That was the Lord Mayor's quote just now. There is in the papers before us today in black and white, in this year, this financial year alone, a $56.6 million cut in employee costs. And if you look in the forward, the forward estimates here in 25, 6 through to 27, 8, there's almost $120 million in employee cuts over the next four years. So, well, next three years, anyway. We discovered in recent weeks, Chair, that there are 30 fewer staff working in libraries than there were two years ago. Now, the Lord Mayor's claimed that as a librarian leaves the organisation, they were needed two years ago. Apparently, 30 of them are not needed in 2024, at the end of 2024. I, I don't understand why. When the Lord Mayor talks about changing the size of the organisation to reflect cost pressures, he doesn't make cuts to major ethnicity projects. He is now clearly belling the cat. And he is saying that the savings are going to be made in reducing the size of council's workforce and offering them a pathetic wage increase and attacking workers' redundancy entitlements. We know that projects have been so badly mismanaged, budgets have been blown so much, that has put council into, well, not council, I should say the people of Brisbane, the ratepayers of Brisbane, into huge debt levels that they're now, this LMP regime is taking that out on council staff. Now, since council's budget was released in June, debt has grown by $44.4 million, which is now sitting at almost $6.3 billion. $6.3 billion. And just think about what do we have to show for that? We've got the Metro Bus project, which launched and then didn't, and is now having some sort of staged launch. And the Lord Mayor described it as a new launch date, a new launch date next year. But on Nine News the other night, it was described as a new trial. Another trial is how it was described on Nine News the other night. So the first rollout on whatever they're calling it, M2, is apparently actually a trial, not the firm launch in January, late January next year. And then we hear that there are more delays with the Adelaide Street Tunnel and infrastructure upgrades right throughout the busway network, which will delay the opening of the metro until late next year. So we know that that's what we've got to show for those billions of dollars, a project that is late and that is massively over budget. When it comes to things like congestion in the suburbs of Brisbane, when it comes to things like investing in suburban upgrades out there on Ritchie Road, when it comes to things like investing in drainage, what do we have to show for the $6.3 billion in debt that has been amassed largely on this Lord Mayor's watch? There's the Green Bridge at Kangaroo Point, which is $100 million over budget. That's something to show for it. The Metro Bus project, as I said. The Mogul Road project will be something to show for that $6.3 billion. But what about the 187 other suburbs in Brisbane? What about everybody else? Now, we're seeing in these papers before us today, Chair, some improvements to revenue in this mid-year review. And that is entirely thanks to the former Labor state government bailing this council out when it came to that bus deal. So councillor Murphy giggles away. But the increase in revenue, the only increase in revenue we're seeing here, which is offsetting some of these massive increases in cost blowouts and debt, is public transport funding from the Labor state government, the bus funding deal, and some Reconstruction Authority flood recovery works as well. So if, on those two items, which are a positive coming, revenue coming from the state government, all we hear from this LNP regime is blaming and complaining. Now, what we know about the metro and the massive cost blowouts, of course, is that that budget first flag was $944 million. We've heard last week, I think it was, it's now up to $1.55 billion. We have no real idea, even if you listen very carefully to everything the Lord Mayor said in today's meeting, we have no idea when it's actually going to start fully. We have, the people of Brisbane have no idea when those three-minute intervals are going to be available on the busway network with these metro buses, given because the start dates are so rubbery with these new metro services. And we find out how many metro buses are actually in the country? 30-something, 30-something out of the 60. So it was never going to be launched this year. It was supposed to be launched last year. So anyway, we know where we're at with that one, sort of. And that is continuing, continuing to evolve. We know the Lord Mayor likes to play politics. And he sat on the damage caused on his watch to the Story Bridge for so long just to try and score some political points, to just raise this around the corner from a federal election, to try and get $4.5 million out of the federal government. And as if to say that there was some sort of special request that was put in and it's all on the federal government, whether they approve that funding or not. Well, in reality, what we actually know is that was a standard funding application process that happens each and every year that councils can apply for to get funding for these types of projects. Now, the Lord Mayor knew, apparently, that there was extensive damage to the bridge. We heard from councillor Wines earlier how much work over the last five years had been done to rip up the surface, the road surface, and peel back decades and decades of lead-based paint. So why did they wait this long? Why did they wait this long if it wasn't, one, that they're entirely broke and they've made the people of Brisbane through their council entirely broke? Or two, because they're trying to play political games? But whenever the budget starts to look rough, pardon me, the Lord Mayor points a finger at everyone else. But the figures do not lie. Further down in the report, the budget report we have before us today, is that we see councillors saving money on the cost of the Victoria Park catalyst works. So they've delayed their centrepiece park project, the Victoria Park project now. They've delayed that and they've put some clever words and clever accounting in there to make it seem like that's a re-phase project. But obviously, we know really what's going on there because the Lord Mayor is so desperate to see a stadium built in Victoria Park, despite it being ruled out by anyone and everyone that has asked about it, apart from the Lord Mayor. So they're absolutely desperate to see that work. But we are now seeing a delay to the Victoria Park project, which was the LNP centrepiece when it comes to park investment, apparently. So they're not investing enough in suburban parks. They drool that money out of suburban parks to spend it in Victoria Park. But now we're seeing a situation where Victoria Park's not even going ahead. All those early catalyst works are being delayed. In the future Brisbane program, we see a $3.5 million cut to the newly named and the newly introduced Better Suburbs Places and Spaces project. So this is one that replaced the Village Precincts project, which is now called Better Places and Spaces Project. We know that, yeah, evidence suggests to us, you don't have to look far, that the LNP don't really care about the suburbs of Brisbane. They made that crystal clear in all the decisions they make in this place and particularly through this mid-year budget review. The Better Suburbs program is supposed to be, it's a very small amount of money, but it's supposed to be about enhancing public spaces and improving our neighbourhoods through footpath and curb upgrades, green spaces, street furniture and connectivity. And this year alone, it's been reduced by $3.5 million and almost $1 million into the next year as well. So there's one project underway and none at the moment. But now there's question marks over future proposed projects in Stafford, in Winham, in Indrapilly and in Salisbury. So it's nice that the responsible chair for this program area could get one funded in his own ward, but then he's cut everyone else, he's cut everyone else loose entirely. And another decrease we've seen-
Councillor Cassidy, your time expires.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Collier.
I move for an extension.
Second.
Move for an extension by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Strunk. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. And we see in this review here that there is massive decreases in library funding. So I mentioned earlier in my remarks that we have now discovered through questions on notice, 30 fewer library staff. I'm not talking about staff that work in library services broadly, in council as a whole, that have something to do with library services. I'm talking about staff that work in our libraries. And I know now, from my own local experience, that when a team leader at Zillmia Library is going on leave, the team leader from Sangate is just filling that job. There's not someone else brought in to fulfil that job. It's just a team leader from the closest library. Has to be two team leaders now, two team leaders. But the Lord Mayor thinks that's okay when he says that this is just about changing the size of the organisation to reflect cost pressures. He doesn't talk about service delivery. He doesn't talk about providing services to the people of Brisbane. But what we see in here is that not just cuts to programs and staff, but also giving less money for libraries overall. And we see that in terms of collections, whether that be digital assets, whether that be books. Libraries are going to be less and less a space where people go and feel supported by council and by librarians and library staff because there simply aren't enough of them. Because council won't employ them. The LNP won't employ new library staff because as those experienced librarians and library staff are exiting council, they are not being replaced. And that's not something that we are making up. That's something that's in the questions on notice before us today, quite credibly. Just on staff too, and we heard this before. So we asked some questions about this. So we heard from the Lord Mayor that he wants to change the size of the organisation. So we know, we know the Lord Mayor, we know the Lord Mayor on his, this verbatim, yeah. So on his watch so far, in the last 12 months, we've seen 572 separations. 572 separations from council and 99 people have been recruited to council. Now, the Lord Mayor wants to find savings. And now, over the last 12 months, we've seen cuts to projects left, right and centre. I've seen cuts to pedestrian safety upgrades in my own ward where zebra crossings were to be raised. Then that's no longer happening. We see park upgrades, drainage projects be carried over from year to year and that expenditure not occurring. I think the Lord Mayor and councillor Cunningham and LNP councillors have found, I'm sure they can find more to cut, but they've found as much as they can in terms of simple suburban projects. And now they're going after staff. Now they're reducing the size of council's staff. 572 separations, including 196 from Transport for Brisbane, 35 from city planning and sustainability, the very staff that we need on deck to help us as a council address the housing crisis here in Brisbane. 84 separations in lifestyle and community services. 167 in Brisbane infrastructure, 18 in city administration and 72 in organisational services. The 167 who have left Brisbane Infrastructure have only been replaced by 35 staff. Now, I know, I know from experience that the hundreds and hundreds of open rolling cases that TPO and TNO offices are working on on the north side of Brisbane, let alone in other regions of which they are located, is growing at a rapid and exponential rate. But there are less staff working on those issues year after year after year. Now, I could see this occurring in my own ward. I could see staff not being there and not being able to do the work that they desperately want to because they are absolutely swamped. And this confirms it now. On councillor Wines and the Lord Mayor's watch, 167 Brisbane Infrastructure staff have left council in the last year and only 35 people have been recruited to replace them. So people who pay their rates are paying more, but they're getting less. And we were, we were decried by the LNP months ago, earlier this year, when we said that council staff are increasingly doing more work but not getting paid for it. And turns out that is 100% true. So the workload is not decreasing. The workload on these council officers isn't decreasing. It's just their colleagues are. Five, so almost 500, a net loss of almost 500 staff over the last 12 months. Of course, we're going to be seeing massive cuts to employee costs when the Lord Mayor offers them a subpar pay increase, when he attacks their redundancy entitlements. And we know that, for instance, one of those library librarians who are leaving council, say they had 20 years of experience in council and were made redundant by this regime. If their redundancy offer got up that they're offering at the moment, that person would lose $50,000 in entitlements when they exited council. That's a lot of money. So we can see in the papers before us today, as I said, don't want to get my numbers wrong here, a $56 million reduction in employee costs this year, a $120 million reduction in employee costs over the next three years means only one thing. Staff are going to get paid less. There's going to be less of them and they will have less entitlements. Now, the Lord Mayor had the gall to stand up before and claim that we don't have the backs of workers, that we don't thank workers. If that's the thanks that our council workers get from you people, that is not much thanks, is it? When those workers who are listening along, and there are council officers, sometimes there's hundreds of them that listen along to these meetings, mostly council officers, mostly council officers who listen to this meeting, we hear you. We know, we can see here the damage that is done by the political decisions of councillor Fiona Cunningham and Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna and every one of those LNP chairs. We can see the damage that is being done to the council organisation by their political decisions, by ripping $120 million worth of council staff out of council over the next three years. So we know there's cuts to projects. We know now there's cuts to council staff, which means more cuts to council services. How could they possibly bring back the first Five Forever program when they cut 30 staff? Even if they got the funding that they claim is missing from the state government, of which I don't think they asked for, from the incoming LNP state government. Even if they got all that, they couldn't possibly deliver the projects and the services that people expect in the suburbs of Brisbane because they are gutting council's workforce. They are gutting council's workforce. They are seeking to divide it, to demoralize it and to control it. This is the LNP way. They are the same at every level of government. They're not in this to deliver for the people of Brisbane. They're not in this to provide great and secure and well-paid jobs for workers. They are only in this for themselves. And that's what these papers before us today shows us. This is a disgusting approach that after 20-something years of LNP rule will do to an organisation and people are noticing. Workers are feeling the most demoralized they ever have in Brisbane City Council. People out in the suburbs are noticing the decisions that this LNP regime are making. And the Lord Mayor can get up and say that he reigns supreme because he was re-elected in March this year and he feels like he is entirely untouchable. But despite them acting like a regime, we are democratically elected to represent the views of our communities. And I just really wish LNP councillors would stand up to the bully boy tactics of this Lord Mayor and represent their communities.
Further speakers. Councillor Cunningham.
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item C, the mid-year review. Our focus is and always will be on maintaining a balanced budget so that we can keep costs down for the residents of Brisbane. You can do that one of two ways, Madam Chair, as I see it. You can take the approach of a Green Labour coalition of chaos, which would make $3.5 billion worth of unfunded election commitments and deliver a budget black hole that could have only been filled by massive rate rises, the likes of which we haven't seen since they were in office last time. Or alternatively, you can do what we did. Take a sensible approach and manage expenses carefully in an environment where the cost of nearly everything has risen dramatically over the past few years. This was the approach that we were upfront with residents about last year and the plan that the residents of Brisbane have endorsed at the election. This year's budget was honoring that commitment, Madam Chair. It was about living within our means and keeping our costs down so we don't have to pass on costs to residents. By making sensible savings to keep the budget balanced, we've been able to reduce the burden on households. We've done just that. The mid-year budget review before us today shows that our plan is working, despite continuing economic impacts and competitive market conditions that continue to impact council's operations. As the Lord Mayor has said, the Reserve Bank Australia is not expecting inflation to sustainably return to its 2% to 3% target until 2026, proving underlying inflation is still persistent and global tensions continue to impact energy and commodity markets. Despite these challenges, we've kept our budget balanced while ensuring Brisbane owner-occupiers pay the cheapest residential rates in southeast Queensland. Today's mid-year review does show some updates since the handing down of the budget in June.
Sorry, councillor Cunningham. Point of order, councillor, do you want, you need to press your microphone.
You don't have a quorum, Madam Chair.
Councillor Johnson, you need to press your microphone. Councillor Johnston, you need to press your microphone. Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Revenue has decreased by thirty-two point six million dollars, mainly due to the accounting treatment of land sales that councillors will recall, seen coming through the chamber in our previous sittings. The revenue adjustment is required to correctly reflect the accounting treatment from a capital revenue perspective. We also start to see the flow-through of revenue from the state to better fund Brisbane's bus network and to keep our cities moving.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
You have a positive obligation to maintain a quorum in this place and there is no quorum.
Thank you, councillor Johnston. I am aware now that we don't have quorum clerks, please ring the bell. Councillors, as we do not have quorum, as per S thirty-two of the meeting's local law, the meeting, it will be adjourned until the next ordinary meeting of councillors. Merry Christmas. Stay safe. Councillors, we now resume the adjourned meeting of the third of December, twenty twenty-four. Debate resumes at clause C of the Establishment and Coordination Report of twenty-five November, twenty twenty-four, taken seriatum for debate and voting. Councillors who have already spoken are the Lord Mayor and councillor Cassidy. There is forty-two minutes left for debate of reports. And councillor Cunningham, you have two minutes and fourteen seconds remaining for your debate. Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to continue my remarks on the mid-year review. Before we adjourned, I was saying that in this review, we start to see the flow-through of revenue from the state to better fund Brisbane's bus network and to keep our city moving. We can roll out the metro and the new bus network and that's starting to flow through with these budget statements. We also see some recovery of costs from the Queensland Reconstruction Authority in response to the clean-up following the twenty twenty-two floods. Now, regarding debt, Madam Chair, the leader of the opposition, and I will quote on this, stated that debt is now sitting at almost six point three billion dollars, end quote. Madam Chair, this is simply not true. Council's net debt is actually three point six billion dollars and has fallen by forty-four million since the budget was published in June. Again, the leader of the opposition is showing that he is clueless when it comes to matters of finance. Councillor Cassidy claimed total liabilities as debt, which includes leasing payments and other accounting treatments. Madam Chair, it's clear, he simply just doesn't understand the numbers. It's no secret that this administration has embarked on a record infrastructure programme to support our growing city and borrowings have, of course, been required. We're proud of our record on major infrastructure projects which support our economy, not just during construction, but for the years to come for Brisbane residents. On top of this, more than eighty-nine percent of our four billion dollar budget is invested in the suburbs of Brisbane to make them even better places to live, work and relax. Although we're on track, Madam Chair, we are still facing the challenging times that sadly all local governments in Queensland face. It's important that we continue to make sensible savings, to balance the budget and keep the pressure off rates and rents for everyone. Our approach has been vehemently opposed by those opposite. But we were upfront with residents before the election and residents have backed in our sensible plan.
Further speakers, councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair, and I rise into the debate as well. Well, here we are today, more than two months after this mid-year review was first brought to council. Yep, I'm glad that the LNP have decided to turn up this time and we are really only talking about it now thanks to the sheer incompetence of the LNP who can't even keep a meeting going to talk about their budget priorities. It's no wonder that they sacked the leader of the House, councillor Adams. Or maybe she is still leader of the House, I don't really know, that's kind of just a made-up title. It was made up to start with. Okay. Anyways, we're back here again today to talk about this LNP regime's badly mismanaged projects, blown-out budgets, staff cuts, services in the suburbs cut. And that's the high-level summary of all of the wrong priorities of the LNP council and how they affect people right across Brisbane with their political agenda and their choices. This mid-year review that we're looking at today is even worse than the budget that the Lord Mayor and his team handed down last year because somehow things are only getting worse under the LNP. We see in this budget review that the cuts are locked and loaded and it reflects what we as local councillors are seeing in every single suburb across our communities. These are the basic services that council are expected to deliver and now they are less than ever before. I know that every single ward office would have absolutely been inundated over the last two months with complaints, complaints about things that are the basics. The long grass that's left unmown, potholes that can't get filled, drainage issues that officers tell us there's no money for, curb and channeling repairs that have to wait again because there's no money. And all of these things are telling the story of the decisions of this LNP council. When people ask, why can't we get council to do the basic act of mowing our grass in our parks, in our cemeteries, in our streets? Why are our streets filled with water from blocked drains that can't get cleared? The answer's always the same. This LNP council have made the decision and made the choice to cut funding to cover up what their real priorities are. And those priorities are advertising themselves and a couple of flashy big billion-dollar projects and made huge cuts so that residents are missing out. I'll again reiterate that our main concerns are about council's intent as well to execute a hundred and twenty million dollars in employee cuts over the next four years. The decisions of this LNP council around what they choose to prioritise should not be taken out on the hard-working council staff who are tasked with doing the absolute best that they can with less than ever before. That's not fair. On this side of the chamber, we are on the side of local residents. We will always stand with them to get a better deal for every suburb in Brisbane. So in summary, this LNP budget review stands for less suburban drainage, less spent on active transport, less spent on park and tree maintenance, less potholes in suburban streets repaired, less on-road projects, savage cuts to suburban libraries and cuts for the poor, hard-working council staff and their entitlements. How is this a good thing? It should come as no surprise, but this Labour opposition cannot support more LNP cuts because the people that these cuts hurt the most are the people of Brisbane.
Further speakers. Councillor Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just before I commence on a point of order, are these matters seriatum for debate and voting that are left or are they all of them individually?
Yeah, that's correct. Seriatum for debate and voting.
Sorry, so the budget review and the councillor stuff, they're separate?
All completely separate, yes. So we're just on C. Thanks, councillor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just briefly, it is nice the LNP to turn up. I guess now the new CEOs here, they're on their best behaviour and they've fast stayed.
Councillors, 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 all councillors on both sides, please do not call out while a councillor is on their feet speaking. Councillor Johnston.
They are, aren't they? I mean, it is their responsibility to maintain a quorum and they were unable to do so. And I do note that councillor Landers was going to allow the meeting to continue without a quorum until I came in and raised it, so. Yeah, because it's your job to maintain
Thank you.
a quorum. And it's very interesting, I think, that the LNP don't think they have to turn up to the second part of the meeting. It's a fascinating thing. Just briefly on the second budget review, I think this gives the CEO a pretty good idea of how poorly the finances of this city are being run. We just heard the finance chair and the new deputy mayor say that, oh, council's getting more money in from the state government, but, oh, we need all these sensible savings. The two things really don't add up. What we're seeing in the second budget review, which is the same as every budget review, is the humpty-dumpty routine of cutting and rolling over, of pushing projects out for one to two years, of re-phasing expenditure and essentially cost blowouts. Now, it's happening everywhere, right through each of these programmes. And there's a couple of things I want to talk about. Firstly, the bikeway projects. Now, I know the state government has provided funding for council for the Annaly Road bike lane design, but this council's got no intention of doing it this year and will be lucky if they do it next year. I know that the council, the state government has provided one and a half million dollars to council for park upgrades in Graceville, which only six months ago I was told wasn't going to happen at all. And now that the state has put their money in, it's shamed council into it. So it better appear in the budget this year because it's tied to a timeframe. But what we're seeing is projects that the state are funding are not being delivered by this council. And that's because they're not in LNP wards. And it is very problematic. I also want to note the issue around flood reconstruction and the lack of action in my ward. There is, from the CEO's information, Madam Chairman, one park in Brisbane that is still closed after twenty twenty-two floods and that is Cactoblastus Corner in Sherwood. It was catastrophically damaged by the floods. There were major vertical and horizontal landslips in this beautiful riverside park that our community fought hard to maintain. Instead of fixing it late last year, I think it was November, the LNP administration handed the land back to the state government. So councils abandoned this parkland and said, we want nothing to do with it. This is despite the Queensland state government saying, I'll give you eleven million dollars to fix it. Council goes, oh, that's a bit hard, we can't do that, it's a bit complicated. Meanwhile, three years later, council's assets that they do have to fix, the stormwater trunk main and the buyer retention basin are still not fixed. There is a plastic pipe running above ground that carries the stormwater. There's a plastic pipe that you are running for stormwater and water supply. Now, they're working on their trunk main, they've been out to see me and told me about their plans. When I ask council what's happening with our assets that council will have to fix, they say the current pipe is functional. Now, I don't know how many stormwater mains in Brisbane are PVC plastic and have been that way for three years in a massively flood-damaged park. That is the only park in Brisbane that's still closed, but it's called Cactoblastus Corner and it's in appalling shape. And it just shows you what this administration are truly like. They talk about flood recovery, sure, in their areas, but not in Tennyson Ward where we still have outstanding flood recovery. And that includes stormwater drainage, which remains council's responsibility. So the failure of this administration to properly manage this budget, to spend the money where it is needed.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers. Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. Look, I'll speak briefly to item C. What we see in these papers that we are now continuing debate over two months later is the continuation of the deep financial trouble that the LNP administration is in. And we're seeing a desperate scramble to cover the growing shortfall. In two thousand and twenty-three, when the council made a ten percent cut to that year's budget, the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget, back then I said the situation will only spiralling get worse and the full extent of the crisis that the budget will be in will not be seen for years later. And we're kind of seeing that play out. And we're kind of seeing that play out. I think previous to me speaking, there have been many comments on the different ways that this council throughout this, through this mid-year budget is shown scrambling for money, whether it's the fire sale of disposal of council properties that we've seen through this budget. And also, of course, the budget cuts to employee costs that many people have talked about. And I'll only touch on that briefly because the one thing I want to make sure that's noted on the record is that $56 million from this year is about 6% of all the staff within Brisbane City Council and that's a huge hit. And the reason why that's a huge hit is because that's people. That's people that will be impacted, not just the workforce that will not be here anymore. But what it means is less staff, more work, more pressure, more uncertainty for the workers that we thanked on the morning of the 3rd of December. Naturally, these kind of cuts means a shift in priorities. Projects are being delayed, pushed into future years. Language used in the documents that we initially received last year use the words transfer, realignment, reallocation. It appears that transfer is there four times, realignment another four times, reallocation about five times. What this is saying, what these words mean is cuts. Big and small projects that were meant to be completed this year or from the previous year that have been kicked on are being moved into next year's budget. Again, while projects that were planned for this year are now being postponed for future years. The shifting timelines and delays to much-needed improvements in our communities are terrible for communities, but also it compounds the uncertainty surrounding this council's ability to deliver on the promises that it makes. What we're seeing here is a budget that continues to show the deepening financial crisis under the LNP administration. Instead of a vision for growth and sustainability, we see short-term solutions, selling assets, cutting jobs, pushing projects down the line. The people of Brisbane deserve better than this. They deserve a government that plans for the future, invests in its workforce, not only, not one that is scrambling to cover its mistakes. And I hope that we can have this open discussion, it's taken a while, but it's really important to have this discussion. The reason why it's important is we are here, all of us, to serve the community of Brisbane. And as we've experienced, not just in the previous summer but this summer, there are so many delays on deliveries for the Gabba Ward. It's, you know, you hear me talk about public transport, but in true honesty, the drainage, the piping that will keep people safe when they are flash flooding, you know, the anxiety that people feel, you know, two days of rain in the Gabba and people are literally, one day of rain and people are calling me. And I think that's what's really important to remember here. Like, we can stand here and politic all we want, but I think everyone here wants the best for their communities, for the people of Brisbane, and also the people that they represent, and that's what we fight for. What we're seeing in this budget is decisions made by the LNP council that are kicking the problem down the road. And I tell you again, as I did in 2023, as I did in 2024, the problem will just spiral and we will find ourselves more and more and more in debt. We need to fix it. I hope we'll do the work to do that.
Further speakers. Councillor Strong.
Yes, Madam Chair, just briefly, I want to talk about the infrastructure financial statement and just a couple of items out of that that don't make a lot of sense. Well, depending upon which way you look at it, either we're cutting or, I don't know, it's really tough to sort of make sense out of it. If we have a look at the income budget, the revised income budget, right, for this item, income, it was revised down about $14 million to $214 million for this year. Now, that's fine, I mean, it was revised down, I mean, that's the things that happen. But for the next two years in the forward estimates, it actually stays exactly the same, $214 million. Now, you know, I'm not an accountant, I'll be the first to admit that, but when you see three figures for three years being exactly the same, it's a red flag for me. I don't see how that's... And of course, we don't really get, we really don't get any information anymore in these reports that we can actually make sense of what's actually happening because they keep that information to themselves, whether even the backbenchers on the other side of the chamber actually get that information or is it... I think it's kept within the E and C, really, and of course, the CEO's office as well. And then it jumps by 10% in '27, '28. So again, 214, 214, 214, and then up 10%. So I think it just looks a bit strange for me, being an old retailer. If, you know, when you consider, this is income, this is what we need to actually fund what we're going to do, right? And it doesn't change for like three years. That's strange. And then if we have a look at the expense budget, there's a dramatic, it jumped, it drops off the cliff. It stays pretty consistent, but it drops off the cliff in '26, '27 by about $300 million. So what are we not funding anymore? What have we cut? Our expenses are down by $300 million, it's a pretty fair whack out of a budget of our making. So that's quite an interesting figure for me. And then if we have a look at the capital expenditure, it decreases every year through the forward estimates. So obviously, we are not doing that infrastructure that we should be doing, right? Especially those area of the infrastructure spend that are like, like we need to help make our city more resilient when it comes to floods, right? Backflow valves and things like that as well. So those are just a couple of items that popped out to me. There was some more in the lifestyles, community services, but I won't go into those. I mean, it's sort of, you know, it's been about two months and it seems, it's important, but it just seems like we've marched past that, those results and nothing much is going to be... I don't think I'm going to get any responses here, but who knows? Who knows? But I'll just, I'll leave my comments there and how many minutes are left? Who knows? Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councillor Allen, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Look, I must say, that was an interesting contribution from the opposition councillors. The leader of the opposition doesn't know the difference between liabilities, debt, net debt, as Councillor Cunningham indicated. He said debt was $6.3 billion, it's closer to half of that. So if you can't get these basics right, what credit do you give to any of the comments that they might make? And, you know, I'm going to call Councillor Strunk to account here. He's been a long-term member of the Finance Committee and he should have at least let the leader of his party know that there was a difference between debt and liabilities. But anyway, that's an educational exercise they can go through. What I do want to say is that the debt that we do have on the balance sheet has been used for transformational infrastructure that is going to provide benefits to the residents of this city for decades to come. And one of the best examples is just recently with the launch of the M2 on the metro. So let's be certain, the debt that is on that balance sheet has provided and will provide great outcomes for the city. Now, I was really interested in the contribution from Councillor Massey and she used the word remember. Well, I thought that was really poignant, remember. So before the last election, we recognised that we had a range of challenges on the cost front, as most governments and organisations had. And we made a decision prior to the last election to look for 10% worth of savings in our budget. Why did we do that? Because we have a strong belief that we need to balance the budget, even in the face of significant challenges, and that we believe that's a responsible approach to date from a financial management perspective. So we made that decision before the election. The opposition, the coalition of chaos, knew that we'd made those savings and yet... And if we hadn't made those savings, it probably would have resulted in a 30% increase in rates for residents. But nonetheless, knowing the challenges, the coalition of chaos went to the last election with $3.5 billion worth of unfunded commitments. What an embarrassment and what a way to deceive the voters of the city. Fortunately, the voters of the city saw through that and we were returned. But that's the stark reality of what we're facing here. An administration that is focused on dealing with the financial challenges and the cost increases that we faced in recent years and a desperate opposition who would say and do anything in order to secure administration. And fortunately, the residents of the city saw through that. You know, we continue to have the cheapest rates in South East Queensland and we will continue to try and manage the budget in a way that not only balances the cost of living impact on the residents of the city, but also to maintain the basic services that we need. And certainly, we are operating in a challenged environment. But I have got to repeat, it's very, very difficult to take feedback and guidance from the opposition councillors when they can't get the basics right. So I did want to turn to, actually before finishing that point, both Councillor Collier and Councillor Massey made much of, you know, we've got to increase this, we've got to increase that. It's as if sort of money grows on trees, you know, it's just down the back of the couch. That is incredibly irresponsible. They need to understand and lean into the challenge.
Point of order. Please, Councillor Allen. Point of order, Councillor Collier.
I claim to be misrepresented.
Point of order, misrepresentation.
Let's do it.
Thank you, I note your claims of misrepresentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before leaning into that, I did want to actually pick up on a couple of things that were said about the Better Suburbs Places and Spaces Programme. I probably don't have enough time to go into that in any detail, but fair to say, the comments that were made by Councillor Cassidy were incorrect and this programme is very much alive and we are going to continue with the programme through the remainder of this term. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Collier.
On my point of...
Sorry, Councillor Collier, you can go first.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. Councillor Adams said that I think that money grows on trees. I don't. What I do think is that these budget decisions are a reflection of the choices that the LNP council make and their priorities, which I think are wrong.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Sorry, you're not meant to debate.
Thank you, Councillor Toomey. Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just quote, I didn't say money grows from trees, I said naturally with these kind of cuts, we're seeing a shift in priorities. It's about choices.
Any further speakers? Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to touch on my eight-month councillor review of the mid-year budget review. And the most disappointing part about this budget for me was the lack of clarity behind the safer school precincts programme. And I think previously we heard Councillor Allen just talking about unfunded promises from the Brisbane Labour Council team when we were running the council election. But today I wanted to outline a couple of things that this LNP council promised at their election and we still haven't seen delivered. In the budget book that we received in our information figures, we also didn't receive any figures, which I was surprised to learn wasn't the norm with all of our council colleagues here who let me know that in previous years it looked very different. And given with the safer school precincts programme, that 66% of students in Brisbane are driven to school and even more so in Polara where there are no completed footpath connections or bus stops in adequate distance, I thought that it was very interesting that 20 days before the election, we heard this Lord Mayor on this side of the chamber announcing more funding to their policy to double funding to improve their safer school precincts programme. And now it's been one year and they're failing to deliver their promises, including the failed launch of the metro, mobile CCTV promised before the last election. And just this morning, I was asking the Chair of Transport what's happening to the 15 additional bus stops that was mentioned at the last information sessions last year, including locations on Lacston Road and also Hawthorn Road. None of these are promises that we made on this side of the chamber, it's the ones that the LNP council made at this last election. They mentioned it themselves, the things that they've promised, and we're simply following up to see when these commitments will be followed through. To me, it's really disappointing again that Polara State School wasn't included despite all of the drama that happened earlier this year and last year when I was first elected. It only seems to be the case that when a journalist sniffs around the corner, Polara is brought up into the next week's business and then suddenly forgotten about. And when I try and request for meetings with different branches in council, I don't see beginning anywhere. So I look forward to requesting a meeting with the CEO at some stage to outline all of the correspondence that I've been receiving, the whole A to Z of everything going on in Polara, because there is information that I don't have, which is stopping us from planning in the most effective manner and using council rates effectively. This is very disappointing, especially as a new councillor, and it's also neglecting the real needs of outer suburban residents. And this is something that I was elected here to convey. And to me, it's quite funny that the LNP councils are happy to spend millions on publicity brochures while cutting programmes to keep children safe, despite what they're very confident to say online and on TV. In my opinion, I don't think brochures should be more important than our kids and I don't think the safety of our kids should be placed at the backburner. I don't think politics should be in the way of discussing the real issues that we have. Recently, we also received two designs in Polara that increased the safety of infrastructure, but it costs about $400,000, which is more than half of an annual suburban enhancement fund. And I will be writing to the Minister for Education alongside my local state member as well and also to the relevant parties involved to be asking for this critical funding, especially when a state school on Ritchie Road will be split into two campuses and currently there is no connecting footpath there. No matter how many times I bring this up to council, no one seems to be taking it seriously. Instead, they like to play games. And I think this is very disappointing. This mid-year review, I hope that first being elected into council, there would be constructive meetings, constructive outcomes. I think this morning was an example of that as well. For eight months, we've been asking for answers, but we haven't been getting anything in return. So I hope that this year looks a little bit different. It's 2025, I hope that by the next budget, when it rolls around, these critical projects will be considered very seriously. And I look forward to meeting with all the chairs and hoping that they reply back when I do request those meetings. Thank you.
Any further speakers? No further speakers, we'll now put item C to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by Councillor Collier and seconded by Councillor Cassidy. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favour and seven against.
Motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Madam Chair. Deputy Mayor.
Madam Chair, as the matters for consideration in clause D have been adopted at the special meeting of council held on the 10th of December 2024, under section 28.2 of the meeting's local law 2001, I move that the agenda be amended to remove clause D of the Establishment and Coordination Committee report.
Second it.
It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by Councillor. It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Adaman that the agenda be amended to remove clause D of the Establishment and Coordination Committee report. Is there any debate? All those in favour say aye. To the noes, those to the contrary, no. The ayes have it. We will now move to item E. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Item E seeks to amend the AP two four seven councillor conduct assessment and investigation policy following state legislative amendments. This follows the establishment of the committee last, of the committee rather, which came through the chamber for approval in September last year. As most will know, the previous state government amended the Local Government Act and the City of Brisbane Act, which has required changes to the councillor conduct investigation process. These changes are reflected in a new policy and these are the only changes, Madam Chair. Firstly, there were the state amendments which removed the ability for council to ask the conduct tribunal to investigate an allegation on council's behalf and provide a recommendation to council. The practical effect of this amendment has meant that council now needs to appoint a third-party investigator for each referral received by the OIA. Secondly, the changes to the legislation also amend the report requirements for council to further include the number of referral notices received from the OIA, the total number of suspected conduct breaches, occasions where council did not start or discontinued an investigation, the number of decisions made by the councillor ethics committee, the average time taken by council to make a decision following the receipt of a referral notice from the OIA, orders made in relation to a chairperson's unsuitable meeting conduct, the number of matters not decided by council at the end of the fina, and the number of matters not decided by council at the end of the financial year, Madam Chair. All of these amendments are included in the item that's before us, and the item will allow council to start investigations as that's now consistent with the changes to state law. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on this policy, AP two four seven, the assessment investigation policy relating to the Ethics Committee. So, the Lord Mayor requested my nominations, or the opposition's nominations back in June last year for the Ethics Committee in council. So, it's now taken seven months to create this policy to sit alongside it. So, that's obviously why the Ethics Committee has not met and convened themselves and, and carried out any work, because they couldn't do so without a, an effective policy. The policy that was in place was unable to be used. The policy is essential when it comes to the process, it details how complaints about a suspected conduct breach are dealt with. So, we're glad that there is actually a policy before us today, because the old policy didn't align with recent changes. Back in September last year, we supported the re-establishment of an Ethics Committee in council. But after reading through this clause last year, I have reservations because of the lack of transparency in this policy itself. And there's a clear difference between supporting, having an Ethics Committee and supporting the content of this policy. Councillors have not been briefed on these changes. Not, not councillors that serve, that are going to serve on the Ethics Committee, certainly not on this side, but not briefed. But, but generally speaking, councillors not briefed on the changes. We've not been given the opportunity to ask questions on a matter that will directly impact how we operate as councillors here. We know the Lord Mayor is running what can only be described as a regime here in council now. At the end of the day, he calls the shots and that doesn't leave me with a lot of trust in the process. There is nothing stopping the Lord Mayor from getting involved and directing council officers towards outcomes. So, we cannot support this clause. There's no detail on how the investigator will be engaged, other than through the disputes commissioner, who is directed by the CEO. That's the, the process, you follow the tree up, the disputes commissioner's reports directly to the CEO. The, the only person obviously in the organisation who can direct the CEO is the Lord Mayor. So, there is no guarantee through this process that there, there is, there's no gatekeeper to politicisation of this process. When I sought advice on the Ethics Committee back in September, I was told that there were multiple options regarding how it would actually work being considered. It's still not clear which option councillors landed on, because there is not enough detail in the policy before us today. It actually poses more questions than answers. And on balance, we think reconvening the committee, instead of bringing the matters it would consider to the full council is a better way of handling those issues, we accept that. But now the policy's been updated to account for the Ethics Committee to consider matters and make decisions based on reports from external investigators. We do note and accept the tribunal process has been scrapped under the recent amendments to reflect, in the state legislation, to reflect that change. The policy does have to reflect that, obviously. In this update, it says once, in this update to the policy, it says once a referral notice is forwarded to the Lord Mayor and councillors by the CEO, the disputes commissioner will assign an investigator to look at, look at and make recommendations to council about dealing with the conduct. When I asked questions about the policy ahead of this introduction of the Ethics Committee back last year, I was told there were several options, as I said, a model, in terms of modelling for the investigation and who would conduct, who would carry out the conduct of those investigations. But now having the policy in front of us, I am less informed than I was after that phone call months ago about the vital process. We don't know who will investigate, we don't know what brief they will given, they will be given in any circumstances at all. We do know the investigator's report outlining the investigation process would trigger a meeting of the councillor, councillor Ethics Committee, who will then determine whether a councillor is engaged in a conduct breach. Also note, there's a further change in this new policy that if the investigator obtains information that a councillor is engaged in alleged corrupt conduct, the disputes commissioner may be advised, must advise and liaise with the CEO about a referral to the triple C. So, there's some things that make a lot of sense in there, but there, i- i- it is so wide open in terms of the actual process an investigator will go through. We don't know if there'll be a panel of investigators. It could be a law firm that council currently has on its panel of law, law firms available, and the disputes commissioner might with, in discussion with partners of that law firm, choose a lawyer to investigate or something. That, that's as vague as I just described then, a process is entirely what may happen under this investigations process, because it doesn't step it out, there isn't clarity, there isn't transparency around the process for one, selecting an investigator, who they are, what qualifications they are, assurances that there is not political bias through that process, because we are a politicised council, of course. So, number one, there are huge concerns around that. And number two, how the investigation is undertaken is not clear. Now, if, if it's the case that the, the state government wasn't clear in the legislation and the regulation about exactly how that investigation had to be undertaken, the smart thing to do in the absence of that would be to put in the policy, and make it as clear as day exactly how an investigator would be chosen and how that investigation would be undertaken. And as I said, we supported the establishment of the Ethics Committee and the three other Labour councillors who are here right now, councillors Collier, Kim and Strunk will participate in that committee. But we cannot in good faith today support this policy, which has raised a lot more questions than it has answered.
Thank you councillor Cassidy. Councillors, under the provisions of section thirty-five thirteen of the meeting's local law on the expiration of the period allowed for debate of committee reports, I shall now put the motions to the meeting for the adoption of any committee report not yet voted upon without further amendment or debate. So, we'll go first to item E. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being sixteen in favour and seven against.
The, the item is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Economic Development Nighttime Economy in the Brisbane twenty thirty-two. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. The Transport Committee Report. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. The Infrastructure Committee Report. All those in...
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Collier.
Can I ask that item D be taken, seriatum for voting purposes?
Yes. So, we'll now vote on A, B and C. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. We'll now, sorry, so A, B and C have been carried. We'll now vote on item D. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being sixteen in favour and seven against.
Item D is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. The Infrastructure Committee Report. All those in favour say aye. Oh, sorry, sorry. If you have done that. Whizzing through them. It's city planning. City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee Report. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee Report. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. City Standards Committee Report. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Community and the Arts Committee. All those in favour...
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Collier.
Can item B be taken, seriatum for voting, please?
Yes. Item B councillor Collier. So, we'll take A and C. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Item B, all those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being sixteen in favour and seven against.
Item B is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Finance and City Governance Committee Report. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? We'll now move to general business. Any speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak about the petition in Infrastructure Committee Report, calling on council to implement traffic calming devices in Rowland and Solar Street in Jibung. This was brought to my attention, the issue of rat running is brought to my attention in Rowland and Solar Streets some time ago, certainly more than two years ago. And over that time, we've been working with local residents, communicating with council, with police as well about driver behaviour issues there. And local residents have been frustrated by the process, or the slow process that council's gone through in response to those concerns. Now, it's one street essentially that is, you know, they, they form sort of a dogleg, two streets that flow into each other that connect Murphy and Robinson Roads. So, those northsiders will know how busy Robinson and Murphy Roads are. It forms a perfect shortcut off Robinson Road to avoid a set of traffic lights that Robinson and Murphy Road intersect on, so cars can cut out that leg, turn left and head up to Chirmside Shopping Centre and, and beyond onto Gimpy Road. So, there's a clear, there's a clear rat run through there. It doesn't form a grid of streets or a precinct like a lot of others are. It literally is just two streets. So, in my mind, over the years, it certainly should be eligible for some form of traffic calming, because there is clearly a high number of non-local motorists using this as, in the technical definition of what we like to talk about, is rat running. The response to the petition said, and I circulated this with local residents who I understand have been contacting the Lord Mayor directly as well. It is disappointing he isn't here to enter, or couldn't have entered the debate, of course, which we ran out of time. But to certainly to hear this anyway, the petition response said the traffic volumes are low and well within the limited neighbourhood roads and there's a very good compliance with fifty kilometres an hour. However, the traffic counts that were provided as well as part of the response to me as the local councillor is that an August daily total showed that the westbound traffic averages were four hundred and seventy vehicle movements and eastbound is a hundred and seventy-four. So, it clearly shows that, you know, there's a rat run occurring, there are three hundred more vehicles. This is a very small, otherwise very quiet street where, you know, people like to allow their children to play in the front yard that sometimes spills out into the driveway with neighbours on the street. And when you have an extra three hundred cars making what, you know, you understand, a frustrated rat run movement off a very congested Robinson Road, onto another very congested Murphy Road out there on the north side. So, council's own statistics show that there is a clear pattern of rat running on there, but it didn't quite meet the, the sort of artificial number that council puts in the policy around providing some form of traffic devices. Now, this limits even what I can do as a local councillor, even if I made the decision through SEF to say, okay, if we do up a, get a scheme designed and, and at some point maybe a shovel-ready project that the Lord Mayor could fund through the capital... maybe a shovel-ready project that the Lord Mayor could fund through the capital budget wouldn't hold my breath, but maybe something through SEF. But the continued sort of, pardon the pun, roadblocks that have been put in, in place for months and months and months as local residents have gone directly to council through me to try and seek some answers seem very arbitrary. So this is, I suppose, an example I use of, of things that are occurring around the city as well. Part of me suspects that it's also that, you know, there's, there's a bit of a directive about not approving these projects as well because they're simply not getting funded. It's pretty embarrassing to go through a process and say, yes, there's clearly rat running going on here. You'd be eligible to, for a, a scheme, a project to deter non-local drivers coming into your street and using it as a shortcut, and then those things never get funded. I've seen that time and time again, you know, the, what's known as the Aberdeen Parade precinct in Boondle has been, you know, gone to detailed design using SEF funding from the Deegan Ward Suburban Enhancement Fund this year after community consultation and concept designs over the last few years. And yet it continues to remain unfunded. And what council officers tell me through those surveys is that that problem's getting worse and worse and worse. I mean, residents tell me that as well. So this doesn't seem to be an issue where we don't have a problem. This seems to be another example of an issue where there is no money allocated to fix these problems under the LMP.
Further speakers? Councillor Wines?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Look, just, I feel a need to respond to councillor Cassidy. It's very difficult. I had a little bit of trouble tracking what he was saying because, of course, he voted in favour of the petition at that recent vote. He voted in favour of this council's position on Rowland and Solace Street. We divided on the Chirmside petition D, not on the Jibung position B. So councillor Cassidy, in fact, voted with us in an undivided, without dividing. So, no, we divided on install traffic calming measures on roads between Seventh Brigade Park and Hamilton Road Chirmside. We, councillor Cassidy voted for what was in this report on Rowland and Solace Streets, Jibung. All right? So just, just after, after all of that, just, I think the record should reflect councillor Cassidy cast his vote in support of this majority's position. All right? That should be the first thing that we, where we begin on this. The other point is, if you reflect on his, on his speech, there was, as our investigation showed, six hundred and forty-three vehicles per day on Rowland and Solace Street. Now, Rowland and Solace Street is a, like a, like a dogleg that connects two major roads in the Jibung area and it sort of works as one part of the network. We found that there were six hundred and forty-three vehicles per weekday at an average speed of forty point eight kilometres an hour. And while I appreciate that local residents would like fewer streets than that, there are streets in our city who have a much higher level of vehicles per day with a much lower level of compliance, which would call this council to them before this one. And I appreciate some residents would view their concern as the most important one. However, we do need to take a whole of city response. And quite frankly, if you're at six hundred and forty-three...
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
I claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim of mis-
I appreciate, I'm not sure what councillor Cassidy is going to say that I, that I have misquoted him as saying other than saying that six hundred and forty-three is very low for a street that would demand traffic calming. You would probably need to have twelve hundred vehicles per day minimum for, for, to qualify for traffic, for a major traffic calming scheme. And it would have to be a level of compliance well above this one. Now, I appreciate that some residents may feel that, that they have some concerns. Can I encourage councillor Cassidy to consider using the SAM scheme, the SAM sign, excuse me, the SAM sign scheme, which is, which I have found in my own ward to be a, a very effective way of managing this sort of things. And so I hear councillors calling out in support that it's been a great funded project, it's done a lot of good in their ward, and which I appreciate that. I appreciate the support. And so I have found in my own ward a really effective way to address localised concerns without massive traffic calming schemes. And I think, I think that if councillor Cassidy reflected on that opportunity, that'd be available to him. But, look, I appreciate the concerns of the people of Solace and Rowland. However, at this time, the city will have priorities which, in streets where there are much greater numbers of vehicles per day. And I think that that's reflected in the vote where, of course, the, the council unanimously voted for our position on that.
Point of misrepresentation, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I am thoroughly confused by councillor Wines saying that we voted in favour of the petition response. I'm looking at the Infrastructure Committee report meeting held on Tuesday twenty-sixth of November twenty twenty-four to be presented to council on Tuesday third of December, which is the Jan meeting, in the, in big tin can, whatever we call it. To have a contents, item D is petition requesting council implement traffic calming devices in Rowland and Solace Street, Jibung. So I'd say that councillor Wines has something that's incorrect in front of him. He might like to apologise.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yeah, um, I'll just stick to what I was going to stand up and speak on because, I mean, I think the biggest old goal going was just then. But anyway, I want to speak just briefly on AP two four seven, councillor conduct assessment and investigations policy. Only the opposition leader got the opportunity to speak on this item earlier because of the LMP's appalling changes to the meeting's local law last year, that guillotine democratic debate in this chamber at a set three-hour mark. We tested today whether it could be extended for an important purpose, discussing bikeways in Brisbane, and they said no. But it's obvious, the restrictions on the length of speaking, cuts to debate in the chamber. The LMP do not respect democratic debate at all, and we know that. And they've used their massive majority to restrict our ability to raise issues. So I just want to put on the record very briefly my concern about what's happened with this AP two four seven. And to be fair, the state government have a hand in this and the problem lies as much with them as with this council. However, it is council's poor, I'm sorry, poor delivery of this new policy to meet the state government changes. That is the problem. Firstly, the policy before us is incredibly vague, it is opaque, it lacks clarity, it lacks substance and it lacks detail. It puts councillor conduct matters in inappropriate conduct back into the hands of council. Now, the OIA was set up to take those matters out of the hands of council, to de-politicise the handling of code of conduct matters. Instead, what we're seeing here is the re-politicisation of a lot of these complaints. Having been here and seen how this process operated, you know, back in two thousand and ten to whenever it was, you know, ten years, a decade of this, it was appalling. Check out the ombudsman's report from, I think it was two thousand and eleven or two thousand and twelve, where the ombudsman made very specific comments that the CEO was providing information to the panel of people who are investigating that was adverse to the councillor. They didn't know about it. They were being briefed and given information that we had no idea and could not respond to. So the conflicted and corrupted system that existed in this council back in the two thousand and tens was appalling. It was appalling. And at least when the state moved to the OIA, which is obviously a failed body, I've said it to them in the inquiry and I've said it here many times, they've been unable to handle complaints in a timely way. They've been unable to figure out what's important and what's not. And instead of adjusting this issue of inappropriate conduct and putting in a slightly higher standard to weed out ridiculous small issues, they've just pushed it all back on the council, pushing it back into the same territory that existed over a decade ago that caused so many problems within councils. And we are seeing that same system happening again. And this policy before us today is the, is going to be the downfall of this process because it is so poorly written. The lack of detail in it, and I agree with everything that the opposition leader said, is really problematic. There's certainly, you know, a number of problems with the bipartisan approach the Lord Mayor takes. The Lord Mayor doesn't speak to us or me or the Greens about the committee composition of the Ethics Committee. He only talks to the Labour Party. So immediately, it's been politicised. Well, well, yeah, but he at least wrote to you and said, hey, he wouldn't, certainly wouldn't do that with me or the Greens. And certainly that indicates that he's operating in a political way already. And we know that because of what happened when the committee was last constituted, when the Lord Mayor came in this chamber and used councillors acting in good faith in a political way and created, I think, some really unpleasant issues because councillors were doing the right thing when they served on the Ethics Committee. That was councillor Cunningham and councillor Cook. So we know that not only does the Lord Mayor politicise these things, that there were massive problems with the way it operated in two thousand and ten. Now, there is a new chief legal officer-
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Point of order, Chair. I just want to seek some clarification on, on, on the vote that occurred. I just want to confirm, for you to confirm, because the papers that were provided to us as councillors said that item D in the Infrastructure Committee was the petition requesting council implement traffic calming devices in Rowland and Solace Street, Jibung. Is that what was voted on when we separated?
No, councillor Cassidy, you're right. Councillor D is the one that was separated, which is the petition requesting council implement traffic calming devices on Rowland and Solace Streets.
Thank you. It is important for me locally. Thank you.
Point of order, Madam Chair. The official documents provided to me by the officers behind me say that D requesting council install traffic calming measures of roads between Seventh Brigade Park and Hamilton Road Chirmside.
I understand, I understand the confusion, councillor Wines, but-
That was the, that's the record provided to me by officers as the official account.
The updated, there obviously was some confusion. There was an update. The updated version is the one that you're referring to, councillor Cassidy. And that is how we voted. Councillor? Councillor Johnston, please keep, thank you very much.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Sorry, I just need some clarification on that.
Point of order, councillor.
What updated papers from the third, meeting of the third of December are you referring to when that meeting had started and I'm not aware of any agenda change to the items? Can you please explain to me what changed and when?
And it was done before the meeting. Yep. It's just the table of contents, councillor. And when you go into the actual body of that, and that was done before the last meeting. So obviously, there was a little bit of confusion because in the body, it has the correct version, but it had been typed up the other way in the content. So I assure you that we have voted on that correct, correct item. Are there any further speakers?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Councillor Johnston.
If there's been a problem with the council papers, the normal process is to correct those through an amendment.
Yep, and they were before the last meeting. That was all done. And I do remember it clearly that that was done. So, thank you, councillor Johnston.
I think you've misunderstood me, Madam Chairman. I am not aware that there was a change to any council papers once the meeting had started.
No, councillor, it was correct at the time that we had the last meeting. It's, it was the correct version when it was distributed, but councillor Wines unfortunately seems to have it, an incorrect version there. So I can assure you, and you can go back and check that, but it was correct as it was distributed. Moving on, councillor-
That doesn't make any sense.
Point of order.
Point of order.
I'm just seeking clarification. Why is there another version floating around?
I'm just, I'm going to say this again slowly. The distributed version was correct. And, and the- Councillors, stop calling out while I am speaking. You have been in the chamber long enough to know when I am speaking, you do not. And I can't be any clearer, it is the correct version that you have there in front of you. We have voted correctly, councillor Cassidy. Moving on. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Collier.
That is extraordinary. Okay. Yep. Sorry, just going to talk-
Councillor Cassidy, do you want your colleague to speak? Please stop speaking and allow her to speak.
I'm just going to talk on one item of general business this evening and that is about council's decision to cut CityCat services in Brisbane. So Brisbane City Council and councillor Ryan Murphy and the Lord Mayor have made the decision to cut more than a hundred CityCat services from Apollo Road in Balimba and the Milton CityCat terminals. And so as of December last year, services from Apollo Road, to and from Apollo Road in Balimba dropped from a hundred and seventy-three a day to a hundred and eleven. And Milton's reduced from a hundred and twenty-two to seventy-one. So in summary, council have cut sixty-two daily CityCat services on weekdays to and from Apollo Road Ferry Terminal. They've reduced fifty-one daily services at the Milton Terminal. Other greatest hits of the LMP's council, cutting river services, they removed the Norman Park Ferry Terminal last year, the infrastructure, without any notice or consultation, which of course follows the form of just cutting the service full stop without any notice or consultation. And of course, last year, council introduced fees for cross-river ferry services that were free previously, without, without really mentioning it or speaking it. They just tried to sneak that one in too. So we are in an environment where, as we know, Brisbane is Australia's most congested city and the tenth most congested city in the world. Tenth worst, sorry, tenth best or worst, I don't know. We're in the top ten. It's not a good thing. And either way, you would think that council would be making decisions to add more services and so, or even just maintain the ones we've got, given the popularity. We've had council presentat-, committee presentations in the Transport Committee and anecdotally, you know, you go out and use the CityCat, you can see people are so excited to get back on the service thanks to the previous Labor state government's amazing initiative, transformative initiative, the game changer, which of course is fifty cent fares. We've seen public transport patronages explode and especially on those CityCat services. So given the context of that, you would think, okay, council's probably just going to keep things going and maybe add some more infrastructure and some more services. So when these decisions were made, my community in particular, of course, were horrified and upset about that. They're still coming to me every single day telling me how frustrated they are that the Lord Mayor and the LMP council have made the decision to cut services from Apollo Road. And it's not just the peak hour commute, it's commuting on the weekends. It's not just for working, it's for families. It's an amazing opportunity to see all the wonderful things that our city has to offer. It is a tourist icon as well. And this decision was made with no notice and no consultation. We need to be encouraging more people to get on public transport and out of cars to reduce congestion on busy local roads. So on behalf of my community, on behalf of the people who use CityCats in Milton as well, we're calling on council and there's more than eight hundred, about eight hundred people now who have signed the petition. I know there'll be more to come, who are asking the same. Please restore the CityCat services cut and invest in more local suburban congestion busting projects.
Further speakers? Councillor Strong.
Yes, thank you. Just one item of general business. And that is a, the Tet Festival that was held a couple of weeks ago at CJ Greenfield. Now, this is an annual event that's been going for- Now, this is an annual event that's been going for, well, near 50 years actually. And it's, it's a very, it's, it's the biggest Vietnamese festival in South East Queensland. All levels of government were represented, were represented. We had a senator and of course Milton, Milton Dick, Speaker of the House, was there. We had representative Carrie Anne Dooley, the member for Raycliffe, who drove all the way down to represent the Premier. That's a, that's a bit of a trip down, I suppose about an hour and a quarter, something like that, or more. It's been a while since I've been to Raycliffe. Anyways, she came down representing the Premier and of course councillor Sarah Hutton, of course, was representing the Lord Mayor, and I was there, of course. There was multiple members of, of the three levels of government, which is always very much appreciated by the crowd, because it's, it is, it is a big thing for the Vietnamese community. Dr Quan Bu, who's the president of the Vietnamese chapter, and his committee put it, put it on each year. It goes over two days, or two evenings I should say. We almost had a bit of a washout on the Friday, but thankfully there was enough rain going on that the storm went right around us and headed south. And, but I tell you what, it looked icy, we had a bit of wind and everything, and, you know, it did look a bit icy, and there were some worried people with all that lightning coming down, and, but anyways, we were thankful that, that it went around this year. It has rained in the past, but not very often. As I say, it's the biggest, it's the biggest festival, short of the Moon Festival, and it's known as the Tet Festival for the Vietnamese community, but it's basically the Luna, the Luna Festival, which is celebrated by many, many cultures in, in, in Asia. And, but there was great representation from a, a lot of the churches as well, churches and temples, and it's, as I say, there was probably, the VIP list that they go through is probably about 50, 50 people that they recognise. So that's how, that's how big a deal it is at CJ Greenfield. Just one note for the Chair, and that is that it's about time that the CJ Greenfield parking area, which takes in many sporting grounds, be sealed. Because it is probably one of the busiest sporting precincts in Brisbane. Driving past there any night of the week or on the weekend, there is always hundreds of cars in there, and so it's used by soccer, it's used by AFL, it's used by cricket, and of course the rugby league as well, so, and netball and a few others. So I just want to make note for the Chair responsible that it's about time that we do get some, that it gets resealed, or gets sealed actually, it's never been sealed in all the time that it's been open. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? No further speakers, that now ends the meeting. Thank you, councillors.